The meeting, also, we ask if you are not a board member or part of the executive staff team presenting tonight. Or being introduced tonight, if you keep, please keep your microphones and videos off. And John, it's all yours.
Great, thank you, Sarah, I appreciate that. So we will begin our meeting at five thirty-five with five board members present, Dr. Tavildor and Jesswin will be joining us shortly. So on that note, I will ask people to rise and unmute and say the pledge along if you care to. Place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
The United States.
Thank you all very much. So, we are going to do things slightly differently tonight. And we are going to open our meeting in memory of a friend and colleague. So we will be opening our meeting tonight in memory of Carmen Larios, our district's payroll supervisor, who passed away Sunday, Sunday evening after a lengthy illness. Carmen was hired in two thousand eight as a human resources specialist where she served for seven years before being promoted to payroll supervisor. While in HR, Carmen was the first person many new employees saw as they were processed, and she remembered their names and faces. Later greeting them warmly as she saw them around the district. She took pride in her dedicated work ethic and bootstraps approach to life, but she also understood that people fall on hard times. And so she advocated for those in need of assistance. She excelled at identifying issues and finding straightforward, common sense solutions. Carmen was fierce and never did anything halfway. Her family, friends and colleagues could depend on her, to be honest, compassionate and full of grit. She was a dedicated mother to her tween daughter, toddler, son and two grown bonus daughters, guiding them with love, firmness and solid advice, and she found true love and companionship with her husband. Carmen graduated from San Ohio in nineteen ninety-eight. She was a diehard Cowboys fan. Had a sharp wit, loved musical theater, old school music and superhero movies. She took joy in watching her children grow. She survived by her husband, children, parents, brothers, grandmother and a whole community of aunts, uncles and cousins. She will be dearly missed by all who knew her. I would just like to say on a personal note, I I was devastated to hear this news. Carmen was a fighter. Even though I hated seeing on Tuesdays after the Cowboys won, she was just a she, she was a terrific person and her loss will be felt by many of us. So I ask all of us to please observe a moment of silence in memory of Carmen Marias. Thank you all very much. Which brings us to approval of the agenda. Or we approve the agenda, I've got one more thing to read. At the November nineteenth board meeting, the board discussed continuing item H one, a discussion item about reopening strategies for schools. We had anticipated new information would be available by tonight's meeting, but that is not the case. Further information, including the results of the district wide survey, will be presented at the December seventeenth meeting. When more discussion and presumably action will occur. For members of the public who had hoped to speak about this item tonight, you may still do so during general public comment. Which will occur at the same time that you would have spoken anyway if the item had still been here. Or you can wait until the December seventeen, again, there will be more information presented. Including survey results and the superintendent will present his recommendation for action. And of course, if you want to email the board with your thoughts, you are welcome to do so as that as we will consider those comments as well as we grapple with the issue of school reopening. Great, so with that said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted? I see so by Lori, is there a second? I see Craig, do a roll call vote, Lori?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Do I, do we have any of our school, our Oh, I see Brianna, great, there's Brianna, so Brianna?
Yes.
Is it, is a yes, and do we have? Don't see our Malibu representative. Okay, so we will approve the agenda as submitted. With those votes all in favor, I am a yes as well. Which brings us to the superintendent's report, so Dr. Droudi.
Thank you, President Keen, I'm gonna share my screen for a second here. Alright, so tonight I will provide my usual update on the status of COVID nineteen in our state and, and county. As, as you know, the number of cases of COVID nineteen in our county, in our country are rising exponentially. Which is seriously, which seriously impacts ICU capacity in our hospitals. As you can see in the chart below. On October twenty-seventh, we saw the fewest number of counties in the most restrictive tier, which is tier one or purple. And a good number had even moved to the least restrictive tier, which is tier four or yellow. This showed great progress and diligence throughout our state since July in reducing the number of cases. In fact, in early October, even our, our county, Los Angeles, came close to moving from tier one to tier two. However, following Halloween, the picture began to change. On the right is a current map of California showing fifty-four counties are now in tier one. This represents about ninety-nine point nine percent of our state's population. All of that progress has been, has been erased and at a, and, and at a dramatic rate of, rate of speed. In fact, our county is now in a safe, in a safer home order, which was instituted earlier this week. If we zoom into a county, we can see that, that our adjusted daily rate of new cases have been hovering have been hovering in the mid to high sevens for several weeks. But then Halloween hit, and that combined with pandemic fatigue caused by people to be lax on following guidelines. People have been gathering indoors at homes, mixing too many households and not wearing masks. Masks went around people outside of the household. And here we are, and those, those comments come from the report I receive on a weekly basis with the health department. Our new adjusted daily cases per one hundred thousand is now twenty-six point nine. That's almost four times as high as it was just a month ago. Now remembering, and now remember, the county will allow schools to reopen when we go into tier two, the red. I'm gonna repeat that because I think it's important to repeat, that there seems to be with all the information I'm receiving with the emails, and I'm sure the board members you are too, many people are of the understanding that we can reopen schools fully right now. And now we need to reiterate that we cannot do that. Until we get into tier two. And that happens, and that happens when we lower our number to seven for two consecutive weeks. LA County met the criteria for one week in early October, but then, as you can see in the chart, we went back up to seven. It took a long time to get our numbers down from the high numbers we saw in July to the lower numbers we saw in early October. Now that our cases have skyrocketed, again, it will take a while to get them, those numbers down. So when one can't see, so we can see, so when can schools reopen? That depends on how well we all work to follow the guidelines and get our county back to tier two. We are entering the holiday season. My hope is that people will behave, but we'll have to see. But even though we are still in tier one, school districts need to prepare for when the county moves to tier two. So I think it is, I'm gonna kind of pause here just for a second. To reiterate that point, for those of you who have not paid close attention to what's happening in the county or even the state. Right now, school districts cannot reopen for the, for the, for the, for the greater school populations that you would normally customer, customer see. I only state this because I'm, I'm somewhat perplexed with a number of emails I'm getting. With people who are having the perception that we can actually open right now. It needs to be restated that we cannot open right now. We don't have the authority to open schools as people wish. I will, and obviously, we all recognize that bringing students back is, is, is essential, and our staffs recognize that, we recognize that, the board recognizes that. But we have to get to tier two in order for all that to, all that to take place. The state and, the state and county have allowed districts to bring students back on campus while in tier one to deliver specific services. So what you're looking at here are, are programs that we are able to bring back during tier one. So at this time, I will invite some of the staff members that have been coordinating these services to speak just about those specific areas. So the first person I'll bring up right now is Deanna Sinfield, she is a director of special education. She'll talk about just the special education services that we are currently, we are currently bringing on, on board, and plan to bring on board after, after break. Mrs. Sinfield, why don't you go ahead and speak to just the special education programs?
Sure, so we started doing assessments of special education students in late September. Which meant that all the assessments that were put on hold during our distance learning platform and the closure, physical closures were able to begin. So we have three assessment hubs where special educators can sign up and have their students come in for the completion of annuals, initials and triennial assessments, any assessments that need to get done. And we opened up our preschools or special ed preschools in three locations. We had four locations down, but we didn't have enough students to complete the four locations. So in three locations and we opened those up on November, I believe, twenty-third. Our adult transition program opened on November nineteenth. Our social skills program at Grant Elementary opened last week on Wednesday. And our, we have our phase three going into effect with just a meet and greet next week. However, after break, we'll be bringing those programs back and those include Franklin Social Skills. Our program at Muir, which is in our, our intensive program, sorry, and and then our, sorry, my dog just decided that because I'm talking, she had to lose her mind. And then after that, we will also be bringing back our life skills program at, in Malibu, which will be elementary through high school programs. And then our phase four would be more of our life skills programs and our PBS programs and our step programs. Those are for phase four and five. And after that, we will look at individualized programs such as SAI, speech, OT and other information like that. So we, we've been opening up on a steady pace, but with the numbers as high as they are, we've, we've slowed down just a little bit to see, before we bring new, new programs on, but they are scheduled to return.
Great, thank you, thank you for that report. At this time, I'll bring up Dr. Jacqueline Mora to talk about the English learner program that we have to support all of our EL, EL students.
Thank you, Dr. Droudi, so as was mentioned before, as part of the purple tier, we are able to bring population of students to receive additional support, and we started with our English learners by providing them the opportunity to have the LPAC administered in person. So that was something that was scheduled for those families that were interested in that opportunity. For all other families, we were able to administer the LPAC remotely. And, and, and as, as a result of the success that we saw within the assessment hubs, then we ended up moving and expanding as per the guidelines to open what is called learning hubs for our English learners. And we were able to send out an interest form to our EL families in order to receive information in regards to who was interested in participating in the, in the EL hubs. More specifically, letting families know that we would be focusing on our youngest learners and our students with the EL levels one and two, so really making sure that we were targeting our supports and services. We were able to collect all of that information, follow up with families and receive confirmation in regards to who was interested in moving forward with this opportunity. So this, this program offering was coordinated and supported by our early learning team and early department, early learning departments, I want to call up Dr. Susan Samarch Powell, who can give you additional information on our EL learning hubs and then also our supervision or childcare hubs. So all of this work was done as a part of her leadership and collaboration of her team, so I'm really grateful and thankful to her support, so I'll hand it over to Dr. Samarch Powell to speak a little bit more on the, with details in our, for our hubs.
Thank you, Dr. Mora, we have currently running four English learner in school work hubs. They are taking place right now at Edison Roosevelt, and I'm sorry, three right now, we have a fourth in our staff supervision hub, so let me go back, English learner hubs, we have Edison, Roosevelt and Webster. We have students at all of those locations that come from multiple sites, so each site is gathering students from different locations. We are small, but we are mighty. We have our child development services staff who are staffing in those locations. We have between five and seven students at each of those locations. And up at Webster, we are collaborating with special education, so we have students who are EL and special education in the same hub together there. We do have an program running at Grant for our staff, students of our staff members, that is a supervision location that is running as well. We also did send out another survey for our English learner families just this week. As a second round to see if anyone had any additional interest, and we do have some more families who do have an interest. As Ms. Sinfield noted, the, the key streets are very high right now out in the general public, and so we are not adding anyone before winter break, we will do so after winter break, so we have a chance to work with our families. Because all of the families who are participating in our hubs right now have gone through parent meetings, they have signed off on parent handbooks, they have indicated that they are willing to stay safe so that they can, as one of our nurses called it, protect the hub, to make sure that everyone stays as safe as possible during those, their time on our campuses. And so those will begin as we return in January. And we will do more interest information at that point to see if there are other needs that we should continue to support as January expands further.
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate what Dr. Powell just mentioned right now, although the numbers are small, we the initial interest is smaller than anticipated, but we are going to look at to expand. If those numbers, since we have room, we will look to expand and more information will come out on that. Athletic conditioning is currently taking place, and I believe is running out, is seasonal. So I know I've received numerous emails, because LA Unifi seem to have shut down a lot of different programs here and there. The question was whether we're following suit and that, and that's not the case with us at this point. We are continuing with athletic conditioning. And as, as the seasons come up, in the different seasons, and the coaches, athletic directors of the two high schools will be, will be in contact. I believe you talked about childcare hubs already, so I'm gonna go on to just a reopening waiver. If you remember, under tier two, we can, as a district or school sites within the district, apply for TK waiver. We have submitted a waiver to, to, to LA County Office of Education for review, and we're waiting their approval. Once we get their approval, we'll have to then still go through a piece of negotiations with the CTA to, I'm hopeful that we will, we will have an agreement, but we'll keep you posted as to what is happening there. But the, the application has been submitted, and right now we're just waiting for a response from the LA County, LA County Department of Education. What are the next steps? Next week is a, is a big meeting, December seventeenth. We, this is where my staff and I are gonna take all the information that we have gathered throughout the semester, throughout the summer. Cup, in addition with the new survey that we just put out, and thank all of you that have, that have filled out the survey. We're gonna take all that information and then, and then make a recommendation for reopening, once we hear tier two. Okay, let me, let me restate that, we will make a recommendation, once we go to tier two. Okay, and, and as I mentioned earlier, we don't know when that's going to be. So we are anticipating that there might be an uptake in COVID numbers during the winter break. We hope that people behave, but just given current history, it seems like that's, that's become harder and harder in the entire country. But the point is, we have to get to a tier two before we finally reopen, but nevertheless, we will make a recommendation for a, a, a way for reopening. And, and, and that will take place on December seventeenth for the board to, to either endorse or reject or give me further, further direction. But, but so I hope all of you join in on December seventeenth. And as, we'll, we'll make sure we schedule enough time to hear, for people to hear the presentation, our rationale. And then, and then we see, and then I'm sure there'll be a lot of people that have interest and want to make comments. Beyond that, we're gonna continue to monitor COVID nineteen cases. Things seem to change all the time within the state and the county, so at this point right now, they are keeping schools. In status quo, they have not shut down schools as they have shut down other, other areas recently. But we'll definitely keep you posted if things adjust with schools, and what I mean by shutdown are, are things that are currently open under tier one, obviously, so. With that said, President Keen, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Droudi. So there's the board. Which brings us to item D, consent. Before we get to consent, we are pulling one item out from consent, it will not be considered. That is under D one one. Independent contractor, the one for next door is being pulled and will not be considered. Other than that, does anybody else have anything they need to say or change in consent?
John, there are a couple of speakers, one of them might have been on the pulled item.
Okay.
And then there's one more on consent, and it's not clear what the item was.
Great, I, I'd still like to see if any board members have anything they want to pull from consents separately.
I'll move consent minus the one you've articulated is been pulled completely.
Great, thank you, and Craig is the second. Do a roll call to approve that, Lori?
Wait, 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 wait. I, we have to have public comment before we ever vote.
Okay, this is the same place, we keep having the same disagreement that I really don't feel like doing it in the middle of a board meeting. I don't think there's a problem for us to bring something up and then to change something. If a member of the public brings something that demands something to be acted on.
No, 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 maybe I'm, we're having a misunderstanding. There was a, there's a motion to consent calendar in the second, that's all fine, but we have two people who have, who have asked.
Okay, I, this is my mistake, my mistake, just on me, I proceeded in the wrong manner, that was my mistake. I was gonna accept it as submitted and then vote on it, my mistake. Yeah, so let's do our public comments on that, thank you, Lori for correcting me.
So the first one is Lydia Moraro, Lydia, I don't know if you had wanted to speak on the item that's now been pulled. So then I don't.
I do actually, good evening.
So wait, if it's already been pulled, there's still need to speak, I don't think.
Well, I do want to speak on the item even though you pulled it because it might come back and you pulled it because you're gonna talk about it again amongst yourself, I want you to know what I think about that, so that you can consider the opinion of the public. When and if you discuss this over again.
Mister, Mister President, point of our order, Mister President.
Not on the agenda anymore.
It's, it's not on the agenda, and also I'd like to say, Mister President, could you please remark to the public that we don't talk amongst ourselves? These meetings are transparent, are in full view of the public, so if this were to come back to our agenda, there will be time for the public to comment before any action of this board. This board does not operate outside of this public venue.
I, I don't understand that.
Lydia, the item was pulled by the staff, the board didn't, no board members had anything weren't part of it, so, and that happens from time to time, an item is pulled for whatever reason, and it may or may not come back. And then, of course, you'll have an opportunity to speak to it then.
So, so Lydia, I know you're staying here for general public, public comment, it is certainly acceptable to speak to an item not on the agenda and general public comment. But as it's no longer on consent, that's why procedurally we wouldn't take a comment on this. It's something that you can raise in general public comment if you wish to.
And so that would take us to the second speaker, Nikki Kohoff, and Nikki just said D consent, so I don't know which particular item, but I'm sure you will know, so go right ahead.
Yes, yeah, I had several items, including the one that was pulled, but beyond that D one two, I'm curious as to how the board reviews all of the SIPSAs. And there are staff presentations attached that are supposed to explain the SIPSAs and what you all are approving at sixteen different school sites, so there are sixteen presentations and sixteen SIPSAs, which are extremely voluminous. And I'm just, you know, kind of concerned and perplexed at how that can be accomplished in a consent item. Doesn't really sound like you guys are looking at those items then. Second, there is on three, two, the easement agreement with Santa Monica. The staff report is incorrect in stating that both easements were required by the city. The staff report created by the city, when the planning commission looked at this, said that the second easement the one for the driveway into the Doubletree was not required by them, but was agreed to by the district. And again, it may be the current state of the driveway, but if the district were to ever use this land again, it seems silly to agree to an easement that could interfere with future school operations, especially when it's not required by the city, so I would would recommend not including an easement that's not required. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, now, John, it's back to you for board discussion or a motion, I do have a question based on the, I would like since I didn't fully understand the comment, I wouldn't mind hearing from Steve or Carrie about the easement and why that is necessary.
Certainly, Carrie Upton, Chief Operations Officer. For the Doubletree property, the property at seventeen seventeen Fourth Street. As we went forward with the lot split for the purchase of the office building, which is on our property, which the Doubletree sits on. The city did make it conditional as part of the easement, as part of the lot split that we would agree to the easement. And that is my understanding and the legal understanding, so I would actually question the staff, the city staff comments as opposed to, because in the legal documents, it was something that was conditional on the lot split. We see that at this time, because of the driveway and for the foreseeable future, we would need to have that access and connection of the easement to the driveway, because that's the way in from Civic Center Way to this property. That for the foreseeable future, that is something that we would want to both need and have with an easement for the city. In the future, if we change the property or change that access, then it would be possible for us to go back to the city to ask for them to vacate the easement, as we have done, I mean, you know, we vacated about nine different small easements at Santa Monica High School over the last three years that were historical and went back forty, fifty years, and we no longer need them. Including most of Michigan Avenue, so it would be well within keeping that if we decide to rebuild this and restructure this not needing an access at that place, we would go back to the city and request for the vacation of the easement. But until that time, the easement makes complete sense with our current and foreseeable use of the property.
Thank you, and then I think the other question to do with the SIPSAs been. The SIPsas Ben or Jackie, did you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, I'll speak to it. Um, normally, i- if you remember in the past, the, the SIPsas were, we would normally have a. A meeting with principals. Uh, I think we instituted this about three or four years ago, in which the principals did a, a. Round robin conversation with the board and some community members, just describing what they're doing. Uh, and, and then they will normally have a presentation to show for you, uh, show in front of you. But given where the circumstances with COVID nineteen and, and just the amount of. Uh, engagement we have in other areas like COVID nineteen and preparation and so on, uh, we decided that. We will give you the presentations. We know you read them already anyway. We give you the presentations and follow with the SIPsas, so. Uh, so, so that's what you're seeing right now. The only thing that's missing is that round robin conversation we normally have when we're together. Um, Dr. Moore can speak to how the SIPsas work, I guess, and, and how is developed and, and, and will. I have, I have to speak right now.
Thank you, Dr. Drotti. So, um, our SPSA process consists of our principals and school site council engaging in conversations. And reviewing progress students have made. Um, typically, we look at our lag and lead data, but. Due to the clo- physical closure of our schools in the spring. Um, the ask for principals was to look at the current data that they had available. And to make adjustments based on the changes that were taking place due to distance learning. So our principals engaged with their school sites, with their school site council, with their various stakeholder groups. At some of our school sites that, that includes their ELAC, some include their PTA, their school leadership team. Or various stakeholder groups in order to engage them in the process. So after that was, after that process was concluded. Um, they, they submitted their SPSAs to Ed Services, to my department, and we reviewed and provided feedback. Our principals then made adjustments based on that feedback and made sure to um, collect digital signatures when necessary. And or include their minutes if it was challenging to collect those digital signatures from any of our respective stakeholder groups. As um, as our community and our board knows, sometimes collecting digital, digital signatures from, from families can be challenging. So we made sure that input and the minutes were collected to include them in their SPSA. So our principals engaged in that process. And in, in made sure to connect with their ELACs and or other stakeholder groups to get that information and get the approval and input. Um, according to our process. So what you see before you is. Um, SP, our SPSAs that have been reviewed and revised and um. That input has been collected from our stakeholder groups.
Great, thank you, Dr. Moore. Thank you, Dr. Drotti. And I think it's good to remind the public of the process that we go through with the SIPsas. And um, and I mean, the implication that the board does not do its homework is, is one thing. We all read these. We are aware of what our priorities are for the district and at our sites, and we thank the, uh, the individual school site councils. For the voluminous work they do to create these documents as well as the site principals.
Mr. President, Mister President.
Yes, sir.
I have a point of information. Actually, I know the answer to this question, but I'm gonna ask you, John, and maybe you and Dr. Drotti can respond just quickly. Um, even in the midst of this pandemic, the SIPsas still followed all of the proto, established protocols with engagement of persons. At the sites and developing these, correct?
I see Dr. Moore has her hand up.
Yes, they did. That was part, that was part of, um, of the process in order to gather input, not only from the school site council. But from their, from their staff, from their ELACs, if a school site has an ELAC or any other stakeholder group. Um, and our principals worked diligently to get that information, um, and to make sure that. Um, the respective groups were involved in the process and they are here this evening as well, even though they are not able to present to you. They are here in support of the work that their teachers, their parents, and that they spearheaded at the respective sites.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I just wanted to point out that it's a serious village that has come together to provide all of this information. Thank you.
Ralph, did you have your hand up for, for this?
Um, yeah, I, I just, um. After, um, Dr. Moore saying that, um, I just wanna thank her. For really, really making these, um, these documents so much more meaningful in the time that you've been here. Um, we've always had them, but it was a much more looser structure and what, what came to the district and, and to the community. Um, and so in looking at them, you know, today, I was just so impressed by the, the depth of the work that's there and the clarity. Um, they are, you know, really valuable documents that, that, uh, people can really look at to see the state. Um, you know, the accomplishments of our, of our, our students and the work that goes on in our schools. So I wanna thank you for that.
Great, thank you, Ralph.
Let me, let me just add, maybe I'll just put a plug in, you know, there, there, there's often people asking questions about. Um, uh, the, the programmatic. Um, uh, ideas and concepts at each site, what's happening with students who are struggling, not struggling, how sites utilize their funds. Uh, I ask all, uh, community members who are interested in understanding, have a better understanding of what takes place at specific sites. The SPSA is that document that'll give you that information you need, so I urge all of you, if, if. If you're Samo High, if you're Lincoln, if you're Malibu High, if you wanna understand what is happening on that site, the vision of the school. And how it is cooperated with the district vision, and that's, that, that is a document you wanna look at.
Very true. Okay, do I have a, uh, Richard, do you still wanna, do I have a motion for approval consent by Richard, uh, seconded by Craig? Is where I was when I misread the item. Uh, we'll do a roll call, Lori.
Yes.
Uh, Maria? Craig? Craig? Oh, I see a head nodding. Okay, thank you, Richard.
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Brianna?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so um, consent is approved. Which brings us to major action item E one, twenty twenty one LCFF budget overview. And I believe Dr. Moore will be leading us on this. Thank you.
So I will be sharing my screen. So, good evening, um, Board President, members of the board, Dr. Drotti, Cabinet and guests. Um, this evening, we will be reviewing the twenty twenty one budget overview for parents. And to begin with, um, I want to highlight the purpose for, for this particular item coming forward to you. Um, I wanted first and foremost, provide a brief background regarding the changes that have taken place with the budget overview. Um, in result to the physical closures of our schools due to COVID nineteen. And also to highlight the various components that make up, um, the budget overview for parents. You'll see that there is projected revenue by funding source, the budget expenditures in the learning and attendance continuity plan. Also, um, also identified as a learning continuity plan or the acronym, acronym A, LCP. And then also discuss prior year expenditures, so increased or improved services for our high need students. Um, as outlined in the twenty nineteen, twenty LCAP. And then my request and our ask is for your approval of the budget overview for parents. That is then, that will then lead into, um, the first interim that will be introduced shortly after. So, um, as I mentioned previously, that with the physical closure of schools due to COVID nineteen, there were a lot of. Various changes that took place, um, in regards to the LCAP, which is our local content. Local accountability plan. And this first became, came through, through Senate Bill ninety eight, which added additional sections. Um, that we needed to, at, at code sections, which we needed to adhere to and adjust in order to provide. Um, LEAs or districts with the flexibility to be able to authentically engage their communities while at the same time. Addressing the changing needs, um, resulting from COVID nineteen and the closure of our schools. So what SB ninety eight asked of us was to, um, what, what it provided us was a change in the adoption date. Of the budget overview for parents for the, for the twenty twenty one school year. Typically, this would have approved, been approved with the LCAP, but since there was a change in the approval process of the LCAP. And first it was the operations report and then it, it, it then transitioned into the learning continuity and attendance plan. There was a need to separate these two pieces from what would have been our twenty. Twenty twenty, twenty three LCAP. So we saw a decoupling of the budget overview for parents from, from that plan. Um, and then they tied it directly to the first interim, which will be, you will be reviewing and approving later this evening. Now, as a district, we are required to adopt and submit the budget overview for our parents. Um, by December fifteenth in conju- in conjunction with the first interim budget report, so they are tied together. In addition, there was Senate Bill eight twenty that also added a subsection to the ed code that required. Um, an update in the budget overview template for families that directly aligned to the learning continuity plan. The LCP. So this really honed in on the expenditures delineated within the learning continuity plan. That was presented to the board in September and approved. So it looked at what were the total expenditures. That also, um, that increased and improved services for our duplicated students. So specifically, we had to make sure that we were identifying the amount of the federal Corona aid relief. And the Economic, Economic Securities Act funds budgeted. So for short, it's the CARES Act, right? The CARES, but the CARES funds that we received, we needed to make sure to include them within, um, our learning continuity plan. So for us, that's the elementary and secondary school emergency relief or the ESER funds. The Learning Loss Mitigation Fund, which is comprised of the Coronavirus Relief CR Funds. And the Governor's Emergency Education Release Gear Funds. Now, I also do wanna call attention because we did also receive additional state funds that, um, are tied to the CARES. And that is SB one seventeen and also, um, the Prop ninety eight general fund. But because these are state funds, these are not, um, highlighted and called out within the budget overview, although it's part of our larger. Our larger, um, budget, they're not, they're not connected to the CARES Act funds that we have to call out specifically. So then what you see before you is the projected revenue by funding source. So here you're able to see that. Um, as an entire or learning organization, the total LCFF funds are a hundred and four million dollars. Um, there's more to that, but I'll just truncate it just for the sake of numbers. Within that, we have, um, for the federal CARES funds, um, which includes the learning loss mitigation. Which is the, um, the gears and the Corona relief and also the ESER funds. That's five point six million that are fall under that particular CARES federal funding dollars. Then we have all other federal funds, which include all of our titles, title one, title two, three and four, um, which is four point five million. Then we also delineate our all local funds that we receive, um, which is fifty million. And then all other state funds, which is three point nine million. Now, when we think about the overall budget, then we have to go. Down and drill deeper into the total LCFF funds. And from that particular bucket, then we highlight. The supplemental grant that we received in order to increase and insert, in, increase and improve services. For our unduplicated students. Then that becomes our English learners, our socially economic disadvantaged students. And our homeless and foster youth. For us, we've also highlighted our students with special needs. And really honing in and focusing on the progress of our African American and Black students and also our Latinx students. And utilizing these funds also to support, um, those target populations and those student groups. So we see that we have for this year, four point five million, um, in the supplemental grant. Now, there, you're gonna notice that there is a change between this actual dollar amount and what was included in our learning continuity plan. And that is because enrollment has been changing on a day to day. So this is actually in alignment with our current enrollment. Um, in, which has changed since the presentation of the learning continuity plan to you back in September. So that is a slight change that you will notice, and that's called out. You'll see that also included within, um, within these, this particular budget overview. Now, the next piece really speaks to the budgeted expenditures and the learning continuity and attendance plan. And the difference of how we are utilizing our funds. So you see that in the. Learning continuity plan, what we budgeted for was nine point four million dollars. So that is what was called out within that plan. Now, that plan was deline- was created in order to identify. How we were addressing the physical closures of our schools and how we were, we were going to be supporting. Our students through the implementation of distance learning and preparing for the reopening of schools. The plan did not ask us to include all of our expenditures within, within our current, um, organization. It was really honed, honed in and focused on our response and the level of services we were providing our students during. Distance learning and preparing for the future. So within here, you're also seeing that it's in the learning continuity plan. We had identified four point eight million dollars through the supplemental grant. To increase and improve services for our students. So this was in alignment with all of the conversations that we had engaged in. With our LCAP DCC and our LCAP PAC around the actions and services that we wanted to maintain. For our, within our, within our plan in order to increase and improve services for our duplicated students. So this is where you'll see the difference between what we currently have in the supplemental grant, which is four point five million. Versus what we, um, identified in the learning continuity plan, which is four point eight million. For that increase and improve services through the supplemental grant. LaCo has asked us to ink, to ensure that this budget overview is in alignment with the learning continuity plan. So that's why you see that difference here. Now, before we move on to, um, the next section, I do wanna highlight, because many, maybe, many may be wondering. You know, there is one, a hundred and four million dollars that is part of our, a local, local, the LCFF. And then all of the other funds that we've also have identified, what is that being utilized for? So the budget expenditures that you see here that are delineated within the learning continuity plan do not include. Um, the following general operating expenditures. So these expenditures. Um, can encompass all of our certificated and classified salaries and benefits. It also encompasses all of the materials and supplies to operate all the basic functions of the district departments. That support also our sites. Um, it does not, this, what you see before you does not include. Um, the cost to maintain our schools, even though they are physically closed. We do have staff that are at the sites, um, facilitating distance learning experiences for our students. And staff that are maintaining our campuses and preparing our campuses for reopening. And that is an expenditure that we did not include within the learning continuity plan. In addition, we do have, as we've mentioned earlier, we do have small, small groups of students on our campuses at this time. Receiving support as they continue, um, engaging in the distance learning experience. That is being provided and facilitated by their teachers. So although our schools are closed, there are a lot of operating. Um, and operating and general expenses that it take, that are still taking shape and are being utilized in order to maintain the, the physical building. For that, for when we are prepared to bring our students back. We also, um, continue to purchase instructional materials or consumable materials for, for teachers and for students. So remembering that all of those, all of those items that are needed in order to function are still being. In, are still being needed and utilized within our respective, um, expenditures for this year. Now, the next, the next slide that you see is the prior year expenditures. Um, so the increased or improved services for our high need students. As I mentioned, these are our English learners. Our socially economic disadvantaged, our homeless and foster youth and all, as well as our students with disabilities. Um, Latinx, African American and Black students. So those are the groups that we also focus in on. How do we increase the services for our students? Um, and what you see here is the impact of the physical closure and of us having to pivot and create changes. Within our implementation of the various actions and services. So you'll see that, um, what was impacted. Was our ability to continue moving forward with the implementation of various professional learning opportunities. We, we seized with the sub release time with additional extra hourly various contracts. We also, um, did not utilize expenditures that we had planned to in order to re, um. Redesign the, the preschool environments because there were funds. The, the preschool environments because there were funds that we were able to identify. Um, that better served that particular need. So that also created an additional. That also increased the net, the dollars that were not spent um, as part of the supplemental grant. In addition, due to the, also the physical closures, we did not need to utilize the subsidies that we had. Um, earmarked for our high need students in, in our early learning pathway. However, that will be continued, that will still be something that will move forward with this coming year, but that is why you see a distinction. Between the expenditures that we budgeted for and the actuals. Um, for the, for the closure of the nineteen twenty school year. So um, the, this is what we have thus far in regards to those changes between what we wanted to spend and what we were actually able to move forward with. Um, due to the physical closures of our school sites. And so at this point, for our next steps, um, what would I ask is for the adoption of the twenty twenty-one budget overview for our families. Um, for the board to uh, move forward with that um, recommendation. And then from there, it would be, we would need to submit. This um, particular um, document along with the first interim. Be on or before December fifteenth, and then it would be posted to our respective website for the, for the public viewing. And at this point, I want to thank you for your time and I want to open it up for any questions or comments that we may have.
So Lori, do we, bef- before we uh, do we have public comment on this item?
We do not. We have it on the next one.
In that case, I will ask for a motion in a second and then we'll go to board member questions. A mo- moved by Maria, seconded by Craig. Uh, board member questions, clarifying or otherwise, Maria and then Ralph.
Um, thank you, Dr. Mora. My, my question is that in seeing that we did not spend all of the money of. But out of the four point eight, the four point seven, we only spent the three point five or whatever. Um, for the most need in, in, in that category. Does that money roll over then for twenty twenty-one year?
That's a wonderful question that, and I, I hope Ms. Kennedy's here, but that money is then. It, we, we maintain it within our district, but it doesn't necessarily roll over into the supplemental grant. So for this year, the supplemental grant is four point five million. And that's what we've um, allocated and what we're using to increase and improve services.
Okay. So my, my only concern is this. I think that uh, even though we didn't use it, you know, all. But the concern is, and I know because I've been meeting up with a lot of the parents, the EL parents. Is the, the ability to make sure that we, we do what we need to do in terms of the programming with the students. So that, that they reclassify as sooner than later. I mean, that's been one of my big, big issues. That if we can reclassify our students by fifth grade, we don't have a, most of these kids will not have those issues going, moving on to. The secondary, to middle and high. Um, but at least, you know, that those monies were set there and I think we just have to. Look at, at our protocols and, and maybe look at the way we're, we, we are doing our work to reclassify these students. And maybe we're, we're, my whole thing, I, I'll, I'll, I'll say this, is that. We are in the twenty-first century, so there's a lot of things that we keep, we keep saying it, but the actions have to do, have to follow that. And so, you know, that's all I have to say, that, that hopefully we can do, make those changes. So that all of the monies really should be, even though they're going to be carried over, that money should be put there for, for, you know, reclassify. Reclassification of these kids for one, and two, for whatever needs we have for special needs and, and um, what's the other category for our um.
SCD or socially economic.
And our foster kids, that, all that. I mean, that's what the money is there for. So I would rather see it go back to that particular category than being used anywhere else.
Yeah, I'll just uh, th- thank you for those comments. I think um, uh, when, when Melody Kennedy and Gerarda Cruz present the first interim. Uh, you'll notice there is a variance, variance. Hearing somebody, okay. There is a variance uh, between what we would normally spend and what we have right now because of COVID nineteen. And uh, and, and it's volatile. Uh, a- a- as you can see, next week I'm going to be, uh, on the seventeenth, I will be proposing. Uh, some changes to uh, uh, in-person instruction when we cover tier two, which will necessitate changes in operations and so on. Uh, the cost of all that will have to uh, be adjusted to, and to match all those, a- a- all those, all those needs. And also in our preparation for the, for the following year. Uh, uh, the, for the, for, for the next school year, there, I'm sure there will be some adjustments we need to make. Uh, so at this point right now, we're monitoring how our students are doing. But in the case that we need to institute something in the spring for, say, some kind of a Saturday school or. Or an extra, I, I, I obviously Saturday, I'll say extra time we need for, for intervention and things like that. Those things will surface and we just make the adjustments a- along the way. So, so uh, so the, the variances we notice in here, I think we're monitoring it. But we also know we have some heavy needs a- a- as we move forward. Uh, you, for example, you'll notice uh, that Samaras Powell, Dr. Dr. Powell talked about. That EL services that we planned because we recognize our EL students were, uh, were, 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 were struggling. And county authorized us to bring those students on campus. But you'll notice all of our attempts to try to say, come, so we can support you, the parents are saying, no, I'm good. Yes, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to expose my, my students. So that, that impacts the budget. Uh, so, but is that need there? Absolutely. We have to find a way to, to uh, serve those students along the way and, and, and figure. If it's not the hubs, then what other, what other ways can we uh, intervene?
And my, my only point was to say that I, I understand the needs are, are everywhere. But I'm just saying that, that those specific ones were for those particular, those, eh, those four categories most in need. And I'm sure the need is there. And it's going to be, I mean, and they, we might not have been able to have used it all because we closed down in March of last year. But now as we're gearing up, um, and we're, even in distance learning, there's some, maybe some other things that could happen. Come January, that I think those monies would be, be able to be utilized. But that's all I'm saying. But hopefully we can keep those, that in mind. In terms of the money that we wasn't expended for nineteen twenty. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Uh, Ralph, and do other people want to get in the queue?
So Dr. Ward, do you see these services as um. You know, supplemental, supplemental? Are we viewing this as one, one-time services or, you know, how's, how's this sort of relate to? Is it a new view of, of services? Is it just related to, you know, the pandemic time or is a lot of this stuff? Stuff that we're going to want to continue or we, and, but we may not have money for, to do that. Is that correct?
So um, what, what the, what you see within the budget overview is really highlighting how we are using the CARES funding. Right? To what, to identify and address the needs that have resulted from the physical closures, but also. How are we using our supplemental dollars because um, we had been utilizing them to provide. Sub-release time, extra hourly contracts. So we're repurposing those dollars to provide services to students. One example is we've been able to move forward with the implementation of our academic support program. Which provides individualized lessons for our students. Um, after their instructional day through our, through partnerships with two organizations within our, our respective community. So we've been able to identify students at the elementary level who are going to be receiving. Um, two thirty-minute individualized lessons in the area of reading, writing or math to support them. And to address the learning needs that have been identified for them. Uh, throughout, from now until the end of the year. So that's one example of how we are utilizing the funding that has been. Um, that is now available because we're, we've been physically closed. Um, and then we can continue to utilize that or C, do we need to make an adjustment, right? Because part of what. You as the board has, have asked me is, how are we evaluating those programs? So my, my attempt is going to be to. Not my attempt, my plan is to monitor how our students are doing as a result of that additional support that they are receiving and make a determination. If it's, if it's something that we need to continue as we move forward into the planning for the twenty-one, twenty-two and beyond year. When we start developing our formalized LCAP. Right? Because right now, what you see before you is a truncated plan, which is the learning continuity plan, but we have to start working. On that long-term vision and how the strategies that we're implementing now can actually, is that something that we want to continue beyond? Or is it just for the first few years, just to try and address those learning, um, learning opportunities that have resulted from the physical closure? And although we're focusing at the elementary level, we are also exploring how we can provide those services for middle school and then what would that look like? At our high school as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Um, I see Richard next. Does anyone else want to uh, ask a question of staff? Okay, so Richard.
Thank you, John. I'm, Dr. Dry, Dr. Mora, my question is a bit. Uh, seeking more clarification and trying to understand better the, the. Maria's, not to understand Maria's comment, I get Maria's comment. Um, but I want to ask something about it. So. I hear you say that there's a sweep and melodies here now too, I see. Um, that there's a sweep of those monies that were not expended. Those categorical, the, right, the, the monies. Am I speaking this right?
Supplemental grant, yes.
That's right, excuse me, the supplemental grant. And um, that, then it becomes. More of a general uh, dispersment, that there's a decision made by staff as to where those should go. I was, am I, am I understanding that correctly?
And then Melody here, so she can clarify even further, like that particular process.
Sure, and I, and I, and I understand that. So, but then I share Maria's um, interests and concerns. And so I just want to do then, uh, this board could direct staff to. To expend those monies and the areas in which they were intended of the supplemental grant, correct?
This board could do anything this pretty much wants to do, yes, at this point. Um, the, the dollars are, um, I don't, I don't really like saying sweep, sweep. It's just that. They don't really roll forward, you know, to, into the next year. Um, obviously, they do um, go back into the general fund. And um, we will have um, conversations and I know if Dr. Mora has need or Dr. Jodi needs, has needs that. Something needs to be done with those, then um, obviously we will be having those conversations and there shouldn't be an issue with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that because the reason I wanted to kind of uh, touch a little deeper onto this is because. I think that the sport should have a conversation uh, about that with these areas. I, again, I agree with Maria. And, and so then w- w- we should be having the conversation as how to direct staff in that area. A- and um, yeah, so that's, that's where I'm at there. And forgive me for using the word sweep, you know, I'm a SMC. Uh, employee. And so if my budget isn't spent, it's swept back and I, I use that word all the time. Maria knows this and I was using categorical where I shouldn't have as well. But I think we're on the same page. I would like to see, Mr. President John, if there's an interest in the board, if there's at least four of us who would like to see this. Uh, conversation moving forward about these up supplemental monies.
May I, uh, may I suggest, may I suggest that? Because we're going to come to you. I think, I think Dr. Mark are correcting this. I think either Jan- early January or December to talk about uh. Uh, 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 the, the assessment data. Uh, the, the, where our students are in terms of the grading, grades, also the, our common assessment. So. We, it, it'll be very clear uh, what we need to do uh, based on the learning data that we're going to collect.
Yes, that's correct, Dr. Roddy. The plan is to bring forth to the, to the board our quarter one, what we would. Our baseline data, which is our quarter one, which is what we're going to be using instead of the lag data, which would have been the, the. Um, summit of CAS results. So we're going to use our baseline data that we administered when we first opened up. We started this school year and then our, for our fall interim, right? So in, come January, end of January, you will be seeing. Um, the baseline quarter one and the first interim quarter two, that includes grades. So you'll be able to see that as well and then um, really provide us direction as well as us providing. Some strategies and some initial thoughts on how we move forward and address those areas of need.
So Richard, I know we as a board did say, I think it was either in July or August talking about these monies, that we knew we were going to see some one-time savings. Uh, and we didn't want to balance the budget on money that was intended to make up this learning loss. At the same time, what Melody is going to show us in the budget later, the interim, is that. The, the savings are sometimes offset by expenses that we didn't, that we didn't foresee. But I agree with you that. When uh, when Doctors Drouly and Moore present that data and show the needs, that it's good to have our powder dry and we can use these funds directed towards. Helping these high need students. I think, I think we're on, we're all on the same page with that. Uh, any other comments? If not, I'll, uh, Lori?
Well, I'm just going to say it a different way, but I think that, I think we're on the same page because I hear Dr. Drouly and Dr. Mora. Basically insinuating that we're going to be faced with a lot of need.
Yeah.
We will, whether you call it, you know, hold over swept funds or the funds we have. It's fine to look at it that way because I think it is instructive in terms of what we use and how we use it. But I think, I think what they're saying is the reality is you are not going to have any problem, hold them for wherever you can find them. We're going to need the funds. I, that's what I hear you saying.
Marty, did you have one last comment or we get to vote on this? Maria? Good?
I'm fine. I just needed that clarified.
Yeah, 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 no.
It's going to come back, that's all.
Okay, um, so on that, we, we have a, a motion in a second, so I'll do a roll call. Lori?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Rihanna?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so that is unanimously accepted. Thank you, Dr. Mora. To major action item E two, approval of the twenty twenty-one first interim report and this will be Melody Kennedy.
It will be me. Let me um, try to um, share my screen real quick. Um. I don't really need to do that. I'm not sure why I'm not pulling up what I want to. Let's try to see if it let me go here. Are we seeing the screen? Yes. It's hard to see you guys, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes, we are.
Okay, I got it, I got it. Okay, um. This is the twenty twenty-one first interim report and I would like to first thank uh, Mr. Gerardo, Gerardo Cruz. With our fiscal services department. He's our director there. Has put in some countless hours, him and his staff, um, our accountants and, and clerks and what have you. And getting these pieces together for us. And um, I'm going to ask him to tag team with me a little bit tonight. We've kind of rehearsed this. A few week, a few days ago and um, hopefully it'll go smoothly enough, but here we go. So um, on the first interim report, it shows the, the district's fi- uh, financial position as of October the thirty-first. So that's really from July the first till October the thirty-first. It's just basically a snapshot of a period of time. And what those variances are within that time. Display, it displays the adopted budget and the first interim budget. Um, with the changes in between those two periods. It includes an analysis of standards and assumptions for financial reporting set by the state. Uh, analyzes the impact of the multi-year projections as well on the general fund, from the general fund and for the current and the next two fiscal years. And then um, we will certify this, but certify this budget report um, by either a positive or negative or a qualified certification. As for the general fund, I will take that piece at this moment on the unrestricted general fund, actually. Um, as you'll see here, I've got it highlighted that um, our total revenues increased by. Uh, two point four million dollars, a little over two point four million dollars. And we'll get into those reasons here in just a moment on the next slide. And then on our total expenditures, um, we actually. Um, had a, a slight increase of two hundred forty thousand eight fifty-three of expenditures um, within that period of time. So for the explanation as to those revenues and, and you know, how those, those funds are moving back and forth and what have you. Seventeen, uh, excuse me, seven hundred thirteen thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars is in LCFF revenues. And that was basically that ten percent reduction of the um, EPA monies and the minimum state aid. That the state of California, as we were adopting um, the twenty twenty-one um, budget. They were telling us that they weren't going to give us a COLA, but they were also going to subtract um, ten percent off of every. Um, state, uh, statewide program, which was the EPA and the minimum stated. So therefore, that didn't happen. We only came into a, a, a. A zero COLA. And with that zero COLA, um, it, we were able to put the ten percent back into the budget. Um, there was um, two hundred thousand dollars, which is somewhat sizable for medical administrative activities. It's called the, called MA. And then another ten percent um, uh, removal or a, a back in or put back in of the ten percent. That they were removing before for the mandated cost reimbursement of thirty-five thousand two ten. And then um, we had eighty-two thousand three hundred and seventy dollars of decreases in local revenues. I'm not going to go through every one of those. It will be here all evening long, trying to uh, figure out all of those pieces, but they're all um, in conjunction underneath. And then we had uh, one million five hundred forty-one thousand two hundred eighteen dollars decrease in local general fund contribution. And that is to the um, specia- special ed program, um, which would needed an increase to revenues. Um, then on expenditure side, I'm not going to point out every single thing here because it's, it's well within your report and I know that. And then on expenditure side, I'm not going to point out every single thing here because it's, it's well within your report. And I know that, that each of you have looked at this because I've heard from quite a few of you at this point. But one of the things I really want to point out is that due to COVID, you're seeing that, you know, hourly and overtime and substitute payments have been very, very low. They have been placed into the, to the budget. However, we have like $408,316 just on the classified hourly overtime and substitute salaries. That's a variance from what we thought it would be. And we know that's due to COVID. We're staying home. We're not having reasons to have to have substitutes and, and have to have overtime and what have you. And then it kind of follows suit with, with other pieces or statutory benefits. All of those pieces kind of follow suit with, within that. Our books and supplies actually decreased a, a bit in that we don't necessarily need as much. And then we have 218,458 increase in indirect charges to categorical programs. And then I'm going to ask Mr. Gerardo Cruz to actually step in here and talk about the restricted general fund at this point.
Sure. Thank you, Melody. So we have to remember that the general fund has two portions. Melody just went over the unrestricted portion, which is our district's main operating costs. But then we have the restricted general fund. And people kind of always get the, the question, oh, what is the difference? Well, this has two large pieces to it. It has, well, three rather, the federal, state and local. And mostly the federal pieces are, are all of our title revenue, title one, title two, title three, four, and so on. State, any one-time state funding the state gives us that's restricted to certain programs, people or items. And then we have the local revenue. You're noticing probably the local, wow, that's a lot of local revenue. What exactly is that? We have to remember that anytime the PTAs, booster clubs, parent groups, any gifts that are given to us, those gifts, I hate to use the word earmarks. I don't really like that, but they're, they're earmarked for certain items or people. And so this restricted general fund simply acts as a pass-through for those funds that are committed to certain programs and people. So that's why we tend to see a larger amount in that local revenues. This is frankly, all of the PTA money that we have. So I just wanted to get our bearings first on where, what the restricted general fund consists of. And hopefully that provided some context for the, both the board and the public. But if we look here, we'll see that we had a major change of $7.9 million. And all those are delineated into the federal, state and local pieces. And if we go forward to the next slide, we can see what those are in detail. You heard Dr. Mora speak to the parent budget, the budget overview for parents earlier, and she referenced the CARES Act funding, which we've also included in the restricted, which we've also included here because remember, it is a restricted fund, restricted general fund item because it's meant for certain purpose. And so those are outlined here. And we have 4.1 for the learning loss mitigation as well as 936 for the ESAR funding. And we'll go into the details for the CARES Act funding in the next slide. But the, the new funding continues on to this state cares funding, which the majority of that 1.8 million is the 795,000 also for COVID relief. And then if you look at that 1.7 million dollars that's highlighted, you'll see, again, that's what I referenced earlier. That's projected revenue from the PTA, the booster clubs, parent groups and gifts. Melody mentioned the 1.5 million dollar decrease to the local general fund contribution. So we also have to remember that within the restricted general fund, the Special Education Department lives technically. And so anytime that they have a change to their general fund contribution that we give them from the unrestricted, that's delineated on this line and it's showing that decreased by 1.5 million dollars, which is, which is a good thing. We have the expenditures portion. You'll notice the very two large numbers there, the 6.7 million and 1.3. You're probably thinking, oh, my gosh, what could possibly we be spending all this money on? And the board, you actually approve and see every board meeting, the board item related to the COVID-19 purchases. And you have a standing resolution that you adopt at each meeting. And this is what the majority of the CARES Act funding is paying for are all of the supplies, PPE, health supplies, custodial supplies. And so there's where we see that large change. Like Carrie Upton has reported before that we are getting ready and getting all our supplies ready for students to come back eventually or when and if that's ever happens. So that's where we see the large change in the expenditures on that piece. If you go forward one. Here's where a portion of the area that Dr. Mora was referring to in the budget overview for parents. She was mainly focusing on the first four columns, which was the ESAR funding, followed by the learning loss mitigation funding. And within the learning loss mitigation funding, there's three portions. The numbers that are highlighted are twofold. The first one is the state's allocation. And so you're looking at that billion dollar number across there. And you're thinking, oh, my gosh, that's great. That's what we get. No, that's not our portion. That's for the state allocation. Our portion is directly under that where it says SMMUSD and our private school allocation. So allocation, excuse me. And so those are listed there. At the very bottom, you see the deadline that the state and federal government has outlined for those funds to be either in one of three categories. The first one is either if the funds are encumbered. The second one is, is if the funds are spent. And then the third one is, is if the funds plan to be spent or committed rather. And so we followed these, we're on track with all of these deadlines. We have spent already the two pieces under the learning loss mitigation fund, which is code CR and GF, which is the coronavirus relief fund and the state general fund. So we spent the 4.1 million as well as the 795,000 by the December 30th, 2020 deadline. Additionally, if you look to the farthest column on the right where it says SB 117, we have also already spent that $175,000 in COVID-19 response funds, even though those funds are not required to be spent until the end of this fiscal year in June of 21, we've also already take care of those, taken care of those expenditures. So, and that leaves the ESAR and the GEAR for future expenses related to COVID-19 relief. So that's, that's like.
So I'll go ahead and just talk about this one really quick. So this is our revenues for our general fund. And as you can see, the, the large portion of this particular pie rate at this moment comes from LCFF funding, which is at 61%. Our other revenues from federal is about 6%. And then you have all of your other state revenues and parcel tax at 7%. City side of Monica joint use at 6%. Malibu joint use is kind of not showing because it's, it's such a tiny little amount at this moment. Smith at 1%. And then we have our Malibu fundraising as well. And then measure Y and GSH at 7%. And then we have our lease, lease rents and lease and rentals. And then other local funds that, that Gerardo had mentioned earlier. On the expenditure side, you can see that, that pretty much 82% of salary and benefits actually takes up all of that budget. And that's not uncommon anywhere. Honestly, if you get at 85% or above, it's when you really, really start kind of worrying about things and, and, and looking at maybe we've, our benefits are too high, maybe something's not quite right. So I think we're right in there on the average when it comes to that. So I think we're, we're doing okay.
Melody, I did want to point out two things on both of these slides and to just leave it on this one is that we want to remember that when, anytime we're showing a pie chart like this, we are showing the entire general fund. That's both the restricted as well as the unrestricted. And so this is in line with, with what Dr. Mora presented in her budget overview for parents, where she referenced that the numbers might look big, but that's because we have to show the entire general fund budget. And so these percentages are based off both the unrestricted portion as well as the restricted portion. So we wanted to make that connection there for the public as well as the board. So that they understand that there is a correlation between the two.
Thank you, Gerardo. And for this one, I think I'll let you go ahead and continue with it.
Sure. So remember, we're still talking unrestricted versus restricted. And how do I know what is when? And so we try to spell it out as best we can when we can. So this portion, we're looking at the unrestricted general fund. And this is really the components of our ending fund balances or what is commonly referred to as our reserve. So we have a unrestricted general fund balance or a reserve of approximately 22.2 million. And as of the second, excuse me, first interim for this year, we're currently deficit spending for, by 5.2 million, which is down from when we adopted the budget was, which was around seven point something million. So that leaves an amount of about 16 million that's sitting within our reserve that is allocated to other, to other items. So if we take that 16.9 million and we see that we have to have a reserve, it was a reserve of at least 3% as required by law, we see that's 5.2 million. So the 16.9 minus the 5.2, we then also have our reserve for revolving cash and prepaid revolving cash is what we have at our school sites for petty cash, which is a standard operating procedure for all school districts, as well as our cash drawers for food services throughout the district in our cafeterias. After we subtract those two, we have an amount of $11.4 million, which is our reserve for up to two months of general fund operating expenditures. And if you'll notice, the second highlight that is noted at the, or excuse me, not the highlight, the very bottom piece of that, the two month reserve for us would be approximately 26.8 million. So we still have some way to go before we fully realize our 17% minimum level for unified districts. For 2018, 19 school year, the statewide average for unified districts like ours was around 17.26. What School Services of California and the Department of Finance usually recommend is around a 17% minimum level reserve for unified school districts. And as you can see, our highlighted portion that we're currently at is only about 12.48, although it is up from 4.8, excuse me, from 8.4% at budget adoption, we still have a, a long way to go to get to that up to two month reserve of 26.8 million.
Hey, can you speak to, when you mentioned that 17% are we talking about unified, that is a regular non-basic aid district or a basic aid?
That's correct. So it's a, it's a unified school district that is a state aid district or also known as not a basic aid district. But for a basic aid districts, I like to use Melody's number. If she can get it up to 30% or 25%, we jokingly say that, but every entity, School Services of California, Department of Finance, Department of Education, they all highly recommend that for unified districts that are basic aid, the reserve levels need to be much higher to counteract any volatility in property tax or any other revenues that basic aids have. So it's really a, a standard, a standard recommendation, a strong recommendation that for basic aid districts like ours, our percentage really should be in the 20 to 30% range.
Honestly, a, a, a real good place would be 23 to 25%. If we could get to 20%, I would be a happy camper, quite honestly. So, good question, Dr. Drouhy. So on this particular one, we've talked about this one many, many, many times. And I don't have it where it, it goes, you know, slide after slide. Because I think we were all kind of on the same page when it comes to what the funding formula is for our local control. And this is actually the calculator that, that we use to do the calculation. It's just based off the base grant and our base grants is 80.4 million dollars. And then we have to add in the augmentation grants. One is for class size reduction, the other one is CTE. And so you add those dollar amounts, the 2.2 million and the $750,000 into the, the mix. And then the monies or the dollars that Dr. Mora was mentioning earlier is the supplemental grant. We don't get concentration grant because we, we're not, we're not qualified for that, but we are in the supplemental. And as you can see, that's 4.8 million dollars for the 2021 year. That gets added in. And then our transportation and TIG grant, 820,273 and the 429,757. Bringing us to a complete total for LCFF entitlement of 89.5, almost 89.6 million dollars. Then what happens is we, we go in and look at the minimum state aid, which is the old 2012, 13 categorical, categorical programs. And you subtract that out, the 8.5 million dollars. Doesn't mean we don't get it. It just means you, you subtract that out. And that brings you into a minimum, it brings you into a total funding less that minimum category, minimum categorical funds of 80.9 million dollars. And then what we've got to do from that, most districts don't do this, but because, I mean, most socialists don't see it this way, but we do. You, now we bring into the property tax. And what you normally do is subtract the property tax from what that total funding would be for LCFF. And that brings you into 13.2 million dollars and negative or over and above, I should say. It's not really even a negative, but it's a, over and above what we would have received from the state. Therefore, that constitutes us as a basic aid district. So we're going to talk about other funds, 11, 12, 13, 14, all of the others. They do have titles to them. So that might make it a little bit easier. For Adult Education Fund, we did have a slight increase in total revenues of $9,434. And we had our total expenditure increase as well by $9,434. Portions of the revenue increases that, that were there or, or increase and decrease, I should say. We did have an increase in federal adult education block grant of $12,505. And then there was a decrease in the state adult education block round of 21,939. Once again, COVID, you know, kind of striking. And so we had some savings or some variances in your certificate, the hourly substitute salaries of $8,423. Same thing with classified. There was a slight uptick in there. And I'm not sure exactly what, what that was or why. It's, it's a fairly small amount. And then we had a decrease in statutory benefits as well. That kind of goes along with all of the COVID pieces and what have you. And I won't go on much more than that because you can pretty much read that for yourselves and see it. I will ask Mr. Cruz to take over the Child Development Fund.
Sure. So this is our Fund 12 Child Development. We can see that we've had quite a bit of change since we adopted the budget. As you are well aware, our child development has undergone significant both revenue and expenditure adjustments. And so these are highlighted here. A reminder that we had to close childcare programming. And when, anytime you do that, obviously the revenue from the state stops coming in as well as any federal revenue we have. But the largest piece here is the local revenue. And when we're talking, referencing local revenue here, this is our fee for, our fee programs, our fee for service programs, which is the most significant change of 4.8 million. You'll notice that right below that is a positive number for of 748,000. If you recall that we adopted the budget over for, to, for preschool programming for the next few years of a million dollars each year for preschool programming from the general fund as well as $200,000 from the LCAP supplemental, supplemental grant. And so that's why we started the year with 1.2 million dollars. As of the first interim, October 31st, that number has increased by that 748. And this was at the board's direction to really make sure that we could operate successful in-person learning hubs for our longest, youngest learners as Dr. Samarge Powell and Dr. Drouhy referenced earlier. And so that really is to take care of this programming. If you go down to the expenditure section, you'll see that corresponding expenditures have decreased as well. Obviously, if you have program that is closed, those expenditures decrease. But what is remaining is the cost of operating the in-person learning hubs. So that's how we got to that ending projected fund balance of 434. So if you're looking at this, you're thinking, well, if you have a projected ending funding balance of 434, why is it that you're giving general, the child development additional 748? You're probably trying to reconcile the two. The short answer to that is that about 330,000 of that 434,000 is restricted fund balance, meaning it can only be used for specific purposes for specific things. And about 200 of that is for the state childcare reserve. And so when you have those strings attached, shall we call them, or those restrictions on those ending fund balances, they have to stay within there. And so that would only have left the child development program with 100,000. they have to stay within there. And so that would only have left the child development program with a hundred thousand dollars for ending fund balance, which is why we made sure to give them the seven forty eight. And so I just wanted to point that out in case there was a question around that. So this is just outlining exactly what I just said. We can see everything is projected losses due to the COVID nineteen closure. The, if you were wondering what the federal program, federal revenue piece was related to, that's our federal food program. If you could recall that the fun, the child development program as well as the food services program kind of cohabitate to make sure that our youngest learners have breakfast and snacks and lunches. And and so that's where that federal funding is there. I already mentioned the four point eight was due to the full fee program as well as the additional contribution, excuse me, in our fund transfer to support in-person learning hubs.
So on the cafeteria special, special fund, we didn't have any increases in total revenues as we all know, we're we're out at this point in time. So revenues are going to probably stand pretty, pretty, pretty stable at this point or nonexistent. We did have some expenditure changes and about forty thousand nine hundred twenty seven dollars worth. The most significant one would be, once again, is in employee benefits and statutory benefits in overtime of thirty six thousand three oh four for a decrease in corresponding statutory benefits. And then two thousand six hundred seventy five dollars decrease in in overtime and and what have you. So on deferred maintenance fund, we didn't have any changes there at this time. And on the building fund and measure BBESS SMS and in all the serieses, we did not have any new revenues come in during this snapshot of time. However, we did have a slight increase of thirty six million eight hundred seventy two thousand seven seventy nine. I don't know why I said slight because that is a lot of money. However, we do have a lot of projects going on at this point in time. And so therefore, it it does reflect that in in that information there. As far as capital facility fund goes, there was no changes there either. So nothing to report at this time. Special Reserve, once again, no, nothing changed since our budget adoption. And our bond interest and redemption fund is holding steady and staying the same. Retire benefit fund for OPEP is no changes at this point. Now we'll be talking a little bit about our multi-year projection and how we came up with the scenarios that we did. The district's financial position over the current and next two fiscal years shows that the state revenue cost of living increases over the next three years is zero percent. And so that's where we've built our our budgets off of at this point in time. If we get new information by second interim or by by close, or excuse me, by adoption time in June, then that will, we will change that. On LCFF, gap is fully funded at this point at a hundred percent. And our student enrollment is declining each year at nine thousand nine hundred seventy five dollars as of Sebed's Day, which is October the first for this fiscal year. I want to kind of just say something about student enrollment right at this moment. We do have a decline, but I I've gotten a couple of messages that we have different numbers for different reports in different areas and what have you. And I just want to remind folks that we do have to look at things at at different times, our periods of time. And when we capture information, that's why this information is on here. On top of that, we're talking enrollment and not average daily attendance. So there's always a difference there. Average daily attendance could be about ninety five percent of the actual enrollment. So just just for the folks that might be listening, I just wanted to kind of bring bring that information forward. So our local revenues from parcel tax, the property YGSH, City of Malibu, Santa Monica, joint uses, all of those pieces, all of that local funding that that we have coming in or local revenues. We're looking at the year twenty twenty one at about forty one point three million, forty one point four million for twenty one twenty two, and then forty two point two million in twenty two twenty three. Those numbers are obviously going to fluctuate with us sitting here in this COVID situation. Everything's in flux, everything's in flux. Not necessarily, you know, not necessarily parcel tax, but that could change too. It just depends on what what happens out there. But definitely on the sales tax pieces, the leases and rentals and what have you, we're finding it harder and harder to fundraise at this point in time. So these numbers could actually fluctuate even here in mid-year. I just kind of wanted to kind of, you know, raise your attention to that. Our employee health and welfare increases increased at ten percent and our step and column increases are at one point five percent each. And then we have our our reserve for economic uncertainties at three percent. And then our reserve for future deficit spending is offset by the budget reduction in the form of a fiscal stabilization plan, which is also included in in your packet tonight. And it's the one that we've we've been showing for the last few reports that we've reported. Our reserve for our reserve for up to two months is in the the general fund expenditures. And then we have a projected property tax increase of five percent. We're watching these things very closely. And then the, this does not include any potential salary schedule changes or any results of any kind of negotiations with CTA or SEIU or with SNSA. I'm going to ask Mr. Cruz again to step in and do this. Do you want to do it from here or would you like to do it some other way?
This is fine from here. Thank you. So we've already in detail covered columns B and C. Those were the individual funds that we covered and we messaged, mentioned the change. So what we're focusing on here is the two out years, the projected out years in the multi-year projection, which is the year twenty one twenty two as well as twenty two twenty three. If we're looking at line one, we could see that the property tax is projected to increase. We have verified that the five percent property tax increase is a reasonable yet modest number to project. And so those are the numbers we're projecting for property tax. For lines, for line two, that was the EPA that Melody mentioned earlier. We continued for the future years at the two million because that is without the ten percent reduction that was already put back in. And for line four, this is the our transfer, our in lieu property tax transfer that we discussed a couple of meetings ago, it had increased because we have a new charter that we have in town that we have to pay our property tax to. And then our minimum state aid piece, which is line six, also has the reduction of the removal of the ten percent reduction. So that all encompasses our LCFF funding. And you can see it moves from one hundred and four million from this year to the next two years of one hundred and eight and one hundred and twelve perspective respectively. Again, we already covered columns B and C, but the areas that we're focusing are our attention are our columns E and F. And this is all other local funding that's not related to the LCFF calculation. Melody mentioned line thirteen of the parcel tax. We still see that parcel tax steadily increasing as is, as was voted by by the public. Melody mentioned that the areas of volatility could be that line fourteen, which is measured GSH and Y, that's the property tax. And so we have our Financial Oversight Committee working closely with the city to make sure that the projections we're providing in these two out years are both reasonable and what they anticipate and even withstanding current COVID nineteen conditions. Another area that we see some fluctuation is our Ed Foundation. We got a note from Linda Greenberg, our Executive Director of the Education Foundation, that they were anticipating lower fundraising in the year twenty one twenty two, simply because of the current conditions that we're in. When people have less to give, they give less. And so as a conservative measure, she advised us that her and her board discussed that it would be more appropriate to have that number at a one point seven five million dollar number, at least for the very next year. And so we made that adjustment there in line eighteen as well. So that is most of the major changes in other local income. Moving on, I know it's very hard to read for expenditures. But the areas that, yeah, I think we could maybe zoom one or two. There you go. Yep, perfect. For the areas, again, of focus, we concentrate on column E and F. We have our certificated salaries. Melody mentions that our assumptions are at the tune of one point five percent between each year. And so those assumptions are built in. One of the areas I do want to draw your attention to is the Pers and Stirs, line thirty two and thirty three. We see that we had some relief in this year and as well as next year, as far as what the state is willing to backfill for our pension systems. But in that very out year, you'll see maybe a larger decrease than normal because it's anticipated that the state would, as of this point, will not be able to backfill as much as they had for the pension contributions. And so that's an area that we need to be mindful of, as well as line thirty five, which is right below that, which is our health and welfare. This year, we had a larger uptake, uptick of about ten percent. Usually, it's around five to seven, but because of the conditions, our our current conditions, the health benefits did increase ten percent. And so we're holding true for that into the very two out years as well. If we move down to line, that's okay. If we move down to line forty one, we can see all of our other operational costs. And a reminder that these operational costs are inclusive of everything from line forty two to fifty six. We can see that it's holding kind of steady of what we've used to. And in fact, it's actually decreasing for the next two years because of the work that we've previously done to have some of those budgetary items reduced. And so it's important to know that those other operating costs are getting under control as well. If we move down to line twenty fifty seven, we see our capital outlay line. Capital outlay in this instances is mostly paying for buses. We did, we did make the decision to not pay, purchase an additional bus this year since the transportation was closed for the remainder of the year. And so, but we did budget that going forward in the event we have to still purchase that bus for the next two years. If you're thinking, well, why are you going to put more cost of one bus in two years? Well, there's an equipment replacement plan or a vehicle replacement plan that calls for one replacement next year and then one replacement the year after that, which is why it's fully budgeted in the next two years. If you look at line sixty four, that orange highlighted line, that's line, that's line sixty four, this is where we're calling out the budget reductions. If you remember, we implemented a fiscal stabilization plan when we adopted the budget back in June. And that saved us significant savings. But we also had in the current year, but we also remember that we had a resolution that came before the board and that was requested by Laco that we still have to implement our fiscal stabilization plan for the next two years, which are the out years of this projection. And so those are being outlined here in that three point nine million dollar number for the year twenty one twenty two, as well as the three point five million dollar number for the year twenty two twenty three. And so once we do that, we'll see that our expenditures at the very bottom line seventy one do decrease for those two years. And so that's important to note there. If you look at line sixty seven, sorry, just one more. You'll see, you'll see that that hundred and forty, line sixty seven, you'll see that hundred and seven hundred and forty eight thousand for the interfund transfer for child development in-person learning hubs. And you'll see that only happens this year and then it reverts back to the million dollars per year as previously approved. Go ahead, sorry. And then we have what, this is basically the slide I referenced earlier, which is the components of the ending fund balance. We already went over columns B, C, and D. But if you look here, you'll see in columns E and F, you're thinking, oh, well, we're not deficit spending or we don't have more money left over. What happened there? Well, remember that we just instituted that budget reduction line where we said we were going to be saving three point five million and three point nine million dollars respectively in those two years. And so once we do that and we hold ourselves to those reductions, we anticipate that our revenue will equal our expenditures, which is always a good thing. We also want to show that in line eighty one, our reserve for up to two months is increasing just ever so slightly within those next two years. And a reminder, it is our sincere hope that that number will one day be the twenty six point eight million as as strongly recommended by the School Services of California, the Department of Finance, as well as the Department of Education.
You know, I'll let you go ahead and take this one too.
Sure. So this is this, actually, I referenced this number on a previous slide. I had mentioned that the statewide averages for reserves in twenty eighteen. For unified districts, all this slide is doing is outlining them in three categories, the elementary school districts, the high school districts, as well as the unified school districts. And you can see that from the prior year, unified school districts went up point two eight percent. And that was that seventeen point two six percent I referenced earlier. And so if we want to compare apples to apples, we want to look at our eighteen nineteen reserves, which is that right line right below it, and we compare ourselves to the standard. That's thirteen point five nine versus the average seventeen point nine six. And that seven point eight five is the actual change from our previous year. And you'll see that that noticing is saying that why is there such a big change from one year to the next? And that's because in the seventeen eighteen year, we had to pay back, excuse me, in the eighteen nineteen year, we had to pay back our ERAF from the seventeen eighteen year. And so that's why the large change there. Every time I hear ERAF, I shudder. So it's like a little word, four-letter word. So if you move on to that very last row, that's as of today, where our reserves are at today. And I've referenced that earlier, those numbers. So currently, we're at twelve point four eight percent, which is up four point six six percent since we adopted the budget.
Thank you. So some important things to to note here tonight is that the budget has multiple variables and some of it's really hard to predict all of these particular moving parts whenever we're in the middle of a pandemic and having to teach online at from home and what have you. So we have realigned the the twenty twenty one budget through the fiscal stabilization plan by nearly eight point five million dollars for for this year. We still need to eliminate the the budget deficit as Gerardo was, you know, mentioning earlier. And for for the current or for, excuse me, for twenty one twenty two, that's about three point nine million dollars and three point five million for twenty two twenty three. So we've got some work in front of us still to be able to do that. We can't look at all of the the variables and the variances that that have come just because of COVID and what have you. There, there is a budget variance, changes of approximately two million dollars from the July first to the October thirty first snapshot of time, which we've all talked about being COVID, COVID related. So we're still finding our way through the moving parts of this COVID nineteen as a nation, as a state, as a district. And we'll need to pursue with with caution in spending our funds, these fund variances, et cetera. I know we've had a little bit of conversation about that earlier, but I think that we might all be on the same page and on the same road at this point. We do have a positive certification for our first interim report. And, you know, we're we're proud to be able to do that in all of these troubling times that we're in. And we will be able to meet not only this year, but our next two fiscal years. Our next steps are to receive board direction on on the district budget recommendations and then do a board approval on the twenty twenty one first interim. And then we're, we have audit, our audit firm to present on January the fourteenth of twenty twenty one for our final two thousand nineteen twenty budget. And with that, I think we're, we're completed. I'm going to stop sharing for.
Okay, thanks so much, Melody, and thank you as well. We do have some public comments on this. Before we get to that, I want to see if there's any clarifying questions from the board. And if there's nothing clarifying, I will ask Board Vice President Lieberman to ask for the public comment. So no clarifying questions. So let's do our public comment.
Okay, thank you. We have three speakers on this item. So each of you will have three minutes to speak. The first speaker is Nikki Kohlhoff, followed by Wendy Dimbo, and then Lydia Moraro.
Okay. I'm setting the timer. Okay. Nikki Kohlhoff again. So several things that I would like to ask and have answered when it returns back to Melody and Gerardo. One, the seven million in in gifts and donations, I think, is news to some people. And so where is that actually broken out where the public can see it? As a reminder, I've requested site budgets from each of the schools for about a year now through the PRA program. through the P R A process. And Gail's most recent response was that site budgets are draft and deliberative documents, which I don't think passes muster with anyone. So we should be able to see that and see where these dollars are flowing and all the other inputs to the to the schools. The public should be able to see that. Second, we have low reserves and you're estimating no deficit spending for the next two years in order to bump up or maintain the reserves. And I'm not recalling a year since we've been here that the district hasn't deficit spent. So I'd like a little more explanation on how we're not deficit spending into the next two years when we always happen. Number three, there's comments that the enrollment is changing. Can somebody point us to what the current enrollment is? That should be available somewhere instead of just saying that it's different. We'd like to know what it actually is and has dropped to. Next, measure R is still listed in the general fund. That's supposed to be a restricted item because it's property taxes for specific purposes in a law. And that's supposed to be in a separate account with a separate plan and not part of the general fund. Consulting fees still look like they're in the seven million category. It's broken down into few, but litigation's still high and the pupil fee lawsuit has not been paid yet. Shifting of Chromebooks from the budget to COVID. I get how that's a COVID expense, but I want to make sure that we're spending our ten million COVID dollars on COVID only things and not just covering deficit spending that was in our budget. Also, it looks like teacher F T Es have dropped, I think, around nineteen. And we're hearing from folks, you know, from the district that there were only four pink slips at the end of the day. And so how do those nineteen shake out? Is that the real number taking into account folks who were let go, who didn't qualify for pink slips because they were too junior? Plus pink slips, plus the early retirement. It looks like there's a million bucks a year being spent on buyouts perhaps. So I think the public deserves clarification on how many teachers we actually lost, regardless of whether they're in the pink slip category. That would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Dimbo, are you here?
Hi, hello to the board, Dr. Droudi, Dr. Mora. I just want to say that as you're trying to balance the budget and not have any deficit spend spending, I just really hope that you don't get rid of more teachers or assistants. I've been talking to my friends and their kids who were A and B students are now C and D students. There's going to be a lot of, there are a lot of kids that are not doing well and learning. I know the teachers and everyone are working incredibly hard, but it's just really the lack of, it's, it's, it's very hard to be motivated when you're sitting in front of a computer all day, not with your friends. So I just really hope that you try to do whatever you can to spend money on teachers and keeping classes small. And, you know, in the hope that we're all, you'll be, everybody will be able to catch up with everything that they've lost during this distance learning. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. And our last speaker on this item is Lydia Moraro.
Good evening again. I will echo Nikki's comment on the line thirteen measure R. I've made this comment many times. It is still baffling to see measure R part of the unrestricted unrestricted fund in the in the general budget. It is prescribed as needing to be accounted for separately. And that's disturbing, and it's not. Line fifty, the consultants are still very high, again, echoing Nikki's point. While I understand some of the lines that are detailed here, it still leaves me with over two point three plus million bucks that I don't know what kind of consultants we're getting for this, but better be a lot of good advice. And in the discussions of how we're going to use some of these monies, I had to step away for a second, so I might have missed it, but I understand from a lot of parents that their students are failing. I mean, getting Fs when they were not before. And I foresee this increasing and becoming worse. And I think that we should start making plans for credit repair and to have that division of credit repair beefed up majorly, both in terms of costs and logistics. So something to think about and plan for, because I believe that's going to be needed. Those are my only points. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia. John, back to you.
Great. There's a lot to unpack there, and I know the board will have comments and questions. Before we get to board comments, I do want to get a motion in a second, and then we can have discussion as this is a major action item. So I see it moved by Craig, seconded by Richard. Thank you. I'm just going to take one point to say something before we go to board member comments. And I might be doing a, you know, George H W Bush imitation here. But just to address what Ms. Dimbo said, me personally, with my one voice on the board, I am going to advocate that we do not see any reductions in staff this year as a as a budget budget mechanism. I think we need to take care of our staff. And I need, I know we need to come back hard with our our students next year. So I personally will not be advocating for any reductions in staff as a, as a, as a budget mechanism or a realignment to to enrollment. And again, I probably just got myself in trouble with that because we don't know what's going to happen in six months. But I at least want to put that out there for people who are nervous or frustrated or concerned. On that note, who wants to go first with comments on this? That's impossible. If people don't have any comments, I'm happy to go, oh, Maria.
There we go. No, thank you. Thank you. It was intro. I guess my question is, I know that Nikki Kohlhoff asked some questions. Well, I guess will those be answered to her directly, you know, in an email to her so that she has, I guess, her question answered?
Now would be a great time for them to answer.
Excuse me. Discussion, and all in this is asking a question. Um, one of the things that I agree, I agree with John, I think one of the main things when I brought up the whole other issue, and I think Dr. Mora and Dr. Droudi already mentioned the fact that, yes, I not only bring in the E L students are having issues along with, I guess, the four categories of the reveal that supplemental monies that is being used for those four category of students, but also includes, I think, overall, all students who are not being successful, you know, with the with the closures. And I think, Dr. Mora, you said that you, I guess, in January, you're going to be back in evaluation in terms of where we are. So that I think the response to one of the questions that we are looking into that. And so hopefully, the parents, my thing is, the parents have concerns. Please meet with your teachers, meet with your principals, and making sure that your principals acknowledge wherever your children's, you know, positions are, your students are involved. So they in turn, they meet with Dr. Mora and Dr. Dr. Droudi so that they could get a better handle in terms of what is the broader need of all of our students that are not doing as well as if we were in the classroom. That's my biggest concern is making sure that we are able to remedy that situation for students that are not being successful. And I think we already got that responded, but the money is there. So that even with some of the monies that we have had, some monies that we hadn't spent, just making sure that they're kept in their categories. That was my biggest concern. So that, again, they're used for what they were in, the money was there put forth originally and not being used to put somewhere else. Yes, we have needs everywhere, but I think wherever the money was, was, you know, geared to that it should stay, you know, within that category.
Great. Maria, Ralph and Lori.
So just a few things, you know, thanks staff for you know, for all the work to to bring this to us in a, in a clear way, you know, showing. Look, it's, it's a point in time where we're assessing where we are relative to the budget that was passed in June. You know, it shows a difference of about two million dollars, but that's just today. So, you know, it's, it's not to say, great, we have additional monies to spend. It just shows where we are and that that will change. It, it always changes in time, whether up or down. We won't know until the next interim report. But it's a good way to see the financial health of the district at this point in time. So it, it says that, you know, our budgeting was reasonable. You know, we can move forward into starting to establish a budget for the twenty one, twenty two year, which will start next July first. And so there is, you know, roughly a six month period of time to to develop a budget. Unfortunately, you know, it's a very crazy time. Numbers, you know, what are we planning for in terms of number of students? What are we planning for in terms of where where students will be, what service will we will need? You know, it's common, unfortunately, throughout the country that that students are not making academic gains that that typically you would expect them to make, you know, at this point in the year throughout the country. So we're not, we aren't different in virtually every way from other other districts. And and it shows again that we're the same. And so I think that you all moving forward will will be able to, you know, address this and tackle this in the way that you have. And the one thing I, you know, I do want to say is it consistently is brought up. You know, that we are deficit spending always and we're in, 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 you know, just are not keeping, keeping a healthy financial picture in future. You know, the the financial stabilization plan that we have, and, you know, there are eighty districts in Lake, in the Laco area. And I'm, you know, I'm not sure the exact number, but I know it's more, more than half have been asked to provide a similar type of plan. It's not that Laco has come in and said, here's your plan for what you need to do. It's our plan. It's a response to our review of our financial future, showing that we need to make budget reductions over a period of time in order to maintain the health of the district in the long run. And we've done that, and we've done it well. There is a document that that shows up periodically, you know, in the, in the budget reviews where we do look at what our budgets are and where we end up after the after the audits. And I'm going to say probably nine, at least nine or ten of the past dozen years. Although the the multi-year projections or the budgets annually have been deficit budgets. The actual budget at the end of the, at the end of the year, as shown in the audits, is in nine out of those, you know, nine or ten of those twelve years has been, you know, positive. And so because of of changes that happen during the year and funds that, you know, that, that, that we get redevelopment funds, additional funds. It's not to say that it's, it's really to say that we're aware of what we're doing. We understand it. We have good leadership. You know, and the board's job is to, is to look at, is given the vision of what we want to do for all our students. How do we use the financial resources we have in the most effective way? I just want to, you know, congratulate the board and the staff for consistently, you know, keeping, keeping the district with with a healthy future. It may not look like it because of what, what we have to say in terms of what's on paper sometimes. Whether it's, you know, through chance, which it is sometimes, but most of it's through, you know, a lot of hard work, you know, to keep the district with a positive, positive future. So, yeah, there are cuts to be made for next year. That's in the plan. And that's hard, that's going to be hard to figure out. But that will, again, put us on a, you know, keep a stable footing moving further on. So, like I say, I'm happy with all the work and and I'm ready to support this when it is turned into a motion after I stop talking, which is now.
Laura, I think you were next.
Yeah. I appreciate, actually, all your comments, Ralph, and I was just thinking how much I'll miss you. Those were good comments. And I just want to build on that by asking a question about the fiscal stabilization number that's reflected going forward. We, we did make cuts for this year, which are why, which are a lot of why the budget looks like it does. When do you project that you'll be able to tell us where you're thinking that three point nine five? Then when, where will that, that money be coming from? And if you have any ideas about that now, even generally that you'd want to share, that would be great. If you're not ready for that, that's not a problem either. I'm just, I'm really more interested in when we'll have an idea of what where that money is going to come from, because obviously, it's kind of critical to the bottom line.
I can talk to that if, if we will. Go ahead, Dr. Droudi.
Maybe, and Gerard, you can jump in. I think you added some, some thoughts of mine. But in terms of, as moving forward, remember, we had a plan to really realign the budget so that way, that way we're not deficit spending. And we've had this structured deficit for a long time, as it was alluded earlier. And this is really about aligning our, our expenditures to our, our revenue. And I had an exercise of incorporating the community in the S back conversations in identifying where the alignment was going to take place. I think we ended up pausing that just because of all the activity that's taking place with COVID nineteen and 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 so on. But nevertheless, you, you all did a great job in accepting our recommendations for that eight, eight point, eight million, nearly eight million dollars or eight million dollars we ended up cutting from the previous year. But had we not done that, then imagine us adding that to the seven million that we have to reduce the next two years. So right now, it's really about looking at continuing that process. I think once we're clear with COVID, and we have clarity around our enrollment, you know, somebody mess, when we look last about, I think Marco have to attest to this, but last time we looked at our enrollment about a month ago, we were down about four hundred, four hundred and fifty students. We hoping we get those families back when we reopen. In case we don't, we have a, we need to have a conversation. Do we, do we sustain the staffing, less four hundred students? Or do we, or do we align staffing to that? Or or align programs to that? So, and I want to remind everybody, most of our elementary schools are around that size. You, you have the Malibu elementaries are around two hundred something. And then, and then most of the elementary schools in our Santa Monica schools are around four, five hundred. There's only two that are beyond, beyond the five hundred, which is Franklin and Roosevelt. So we're talking about a substantial amount of students. So, so we have to have that conversation. So there will, the board is saying, leave that alone, that we got to go other places. And try to identify where we can, we can align the budget to the, to our programs.
So, so I will say to, to, to just be pointed of the question, we did have a very lofty goal of to have that three point, whatever, nine or five million dollars identified. I think Cabinet can remember, I kept bugging them, okay, nobody's going for holiday break and until December eighteenth comes, and we have identified this. But of course, they laughed at me. No, I'm kidding. Our concentration shifted to what we needed to address now with the, the COVID nineteen situation. So the answer is we hope to have it identified in December, but currently, it's looking like more January or February until we start to dive deeper into the budget planning process.
Yeah. Right now, we just don't know what school is going to look like, you know, you know. In order for us to anticipate what the Spanish is going to be, we need to identify what model we're going to approach, you know. And that's why, that's why these variances that you see right now are under these conditions under COVID nineteen. But is that going to be the same? So it's hard to anticipate what we need and what we're and that includes a number of students. All right, we don't. So, so that's the complexity of this thing. If we have clarity around what things are going to look like, then it's much easier to start making decisions. But right now.
Certainly is a fair answer, but I don't know that we're going to have clarity. So I don't know whether the January and February timeframe that Gerardo just mentioned will be able to come to pass. But I get what you're saying. I I guess I wanted to make sure you think we're going to be able to make that commitment and that the board will be able to see how we're looking at doing that sometime soon. And I, but I totally appreciate what you're saying about why you can't say what that is now, because you don't know.
There's two, there's two areas of this. Programatically, what what changes are going to take place, that's one. And also the revenue side, we we have to figure out what's happening in the city of Santa Monica with the property taxes, all of that. There's information we need to make a decision and it's really about the pacing. Right? How fast do we do that? Am I going to come to you and say, look, it's it's too, it's too ambiguous? Maybe we let's let's slow this down or 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 if we we're in dire straits because the revenue has reduced, then then I will come to you and say, look, this is looking bad. We have, we have to increase the pace by which we we make these changes. So so those are still, like I said, we got, we got to, I would say about a month, we're going to start hearing information from state and the city about what what our revenue is going to look like. And expenditure wise, still, like I said, if we, it depends on our model, you know, if it's a hybrid model, we come back in, that's that's one expenditure, if it's distance plus, that's another expenditure, you know, so we have to, we have to kind of look at all that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks. So I will, oh, Maria, then Craig.
Just, well, Craig, you want to go first since I already had a turn? Would you want to go?
Doesn't matter.
Go ahead, Craig.
Okay. So first I want to speak to this learning loss question, right? I mean, we're all heartbroken, deeply concerned. And, you know, this, this is a subject that's way bigger than the budget question. It's a question of how do we get the kids who need the who have always needed our help the most, who are struggling the most under COVID? How do we restore their learning environment so that they can catch up, get ahead, do what we've always hoped that they do, which is achieve at the highest levels? And we are having, staff is having one heck of a problem trying to get everybody to come to an agreement on on how we do that. And while we're not coming to that agreement and while COVID is raging, which is the most important factor here, right? Because nobody's doing this, there's an external force, a huge pandemic that killed 3,000 people today that have us operating under conditions that no one ever anticipated. But we, as the adults, need to figure out how to take care of those kids. And, you know, we know the the statistic that you can pick high school graduation rates, you can predict them in third grade. So we're watching kids in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, not getting what they need, which could have catastrophic results on a whole generation of kids. We've got to figure out a solution to this. And that's not tonight's conversation, in part, it's next week's conversation. But staff's been working like crazy and worrying like crazy about this since this all hit. And we just, we all, the board knows this, the staff knows this, but we all, everybody on this call needs to understand that. And yes, that has budgetary implications too, but it's way bigger than that. So going back to the budget thing, you know, to me, this is like you're flying a plane and an enormous storm hits and your instruments go out and the plane's jumping around the sky. I mean, one of the first things that has to happen, which I've been waiting for in the first interim, is that moment, is now we have some readings about what this has done to our budget. Because we were under a budget challenge when we came into this year before COVID. And so one of the things that was worrisome was, well, how is COVID going to impact this already challenging situation? So now we have that report. Then we've got an environmental issue, which is enrollment, which we've talked about, which John addressed. And we're going to have to 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 come to grips with, but we're in the middle of the crisis now, right? The goal of learning loss, the goal of all that we do in this district is to get those kids back into classrooms and get back to what we do best, which is kids on the ground in the classrooms. Hopefully, we'll be in a position to do that no later than the fall, no later than the beginning of the 21, 22 school year. And hopefully, our enrollment returns to normal at that point. And but we're going to have to figure that out. We got a budget process to go through in the late winter and spring. We're going to have to figure that piece out. And then we got to go back to the big thing, the two big things that we were doing coming into this year, which was aligning our budget to meet our goals and to meet our resources, right? And we still have to do that. We still have cuts to make, we still have goals where we not only, to Maria's point, not only do we want to do what we've been doing, but more efficient, efficiently. We want to do it differently, we want to do it better, we want to do it taking into account the future these kids are going to live in, not the 1880s when the current educational practices of the United States were designed. So we have a, we've got to get through the storm, figure out all that stuff and safely to the best of our ability, take care of our kids and our staff and get our job done. While at the same time, we have to be realigning ourselves because we've got budget issues and we've got academic objectives that we all believe insist, demand and are committed to achieving. And we have to do all of that in the midst of this mess that we're in. So this is the first piece of the puzzle. We get our first interim, we see where we are. Hopefully, we're closer to the end than the beginning of COVID. And we start making plans, starting next week into the spring for what happens next year, what happens next fall, what the budget looks like. So, you know, to make sense of what we all just saw in terms of what does it mean, where are we going? To me, that's the story of what we just saw, where we are and where we're going. Thank you.
That's right, Maria.
Well, that's fine, you know, I think Craig hit a lot of the points I was going to make, so that's fine. I'm good.
All right. I just want to bring up a couple of things then, and then we've, there's nothing else, we can move on. I appreciate how Gerardo and Melody addressed the the uncertainties with local revenue. I think for this interim going forward, that the 12.5 that you have in for GSH and Y is probably here in the middle of that delta that we're looking at. So I think I'm comfortable with that moving forward and I like how you addressed that. I'm curious, just one question. Did, I I know with our our one-time CARES dollars, we did invest in a lot of technology. Is that something that's offset, just as a coincidence, that offset other technology needs that we would have had coming down the the road, either this year or next year? And either whether it's upgrading, upgrading technology or 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 adding more technology to our classrooms?
Dr. Moore. Yeah, so that would be me, so yes. So if you recall, part of our digital learning program was we had created a phase model where we would be replenishing the Chromebooks for all of our students from third, from third and up, and then having iPads from our, for our lower grades. So we have been able to move forward with replenishing the Chromebooks for all of our students that did not have that, beginning with third grade. So that has been on order. We've also been able to move forward with replacing computers, laptops for our teachers that had a laptop that was five years older. So we, it it did, it did support us in being able to address the technology needs that that we had delineated previously and that we had strategically developed a plan of action to address. That still does not mean, we still have to start thinking about what the replenishing and or the refresh plan would be for that, right? Because we we know that through the years, technology needs to be updated and upgraded. So that will be something that we'll have to continue dialoguing about and and figuring out the best course of action. But it did, it's supporting us in that space very much.
I I think it's good, good to hear that. I I also have one other comment I want to make. I I can, there's everything that, but I I know people keep, people love to point out the consultant number. Right now, we, the consultant number is budgeted at 2.2 million. That falls within other operational costs within the district. I I know when people hear the consultant word, they just assume that it's, you know, Dr. Drouhy bringing this person and Dr. Moore bringing this person. And we have consultants in our district that we must have. We have audits, we have technology, we we have other needs with consultants that are not, how should I say, that are not, what's the word I'm looking for? It's an economic term and I.
Discretionary?
Just, yeah, that's good enough, discretionary, there's a different.
You're foundational.
It's not it either, I'll think of, I'll think of it tonight when the meeting's over. But the point I'm trying to make is there are consultants that make this district run that we must have. If you go back through the cuts that were made last year, we put PD squarely on the laps of our teachers. We said, lead the way on PD. We took out restrictive measures, we took out a lot of consultants that we believed in, but that our staff said, we can pick up this work ourselves and we trusted them to do that, we empowered them to do that. So if you look at the consultant number, I I I just wish we could see it as the things that are, that are, that are, that are just vital to the operations of our district and look at the reductions that have been made in that category. But again, if things are discretionary, we can continue to look at that when we make further cuts. Does anyone have anything they want to say on any of this, on this item, or can we call about? We already have.
Can I, can I just speak to something for you, John, really quick? Something that Ms. Kohlhoff had asked a question about, and I would like Gerardo to to answer. And I think it's a quick answer on the measure R piece of it. Would you like to answer that?
Sure. Yeah, so one thing we have to remember is that the district or not any one district sets or or sets the requirement on which type of revenue sources fall into which general fund. Remember, there's restricted general fund versus unrestricted general fund. So if if we were to be presenting to you from the beautiful 141-page document that's called the Saks Report in the attachments, we would see on PDF page 11 that there's a specific revenue source called parcel tax. The state has identified that parcel taxes as a whole fall within the unrestricted general fund portion of the general fund. And if you look on that page, 11 of 141, and you see the parcel tax with the object code 8621, we can see that we're identifying specifically that 12, right now, 12.5 million dollars. And so there's an, so that's the first technical aspect. The second technical aspect is when, well, let me back up. So that's in turn, and the state sees that as unrestricted revenue. What the voters have done for us is then said, okay, we're giving you this unrestricted dollar amount, but we are therefore making it restricted by requiring you to do an annual plan. And so we want to be cleared about when it's appropriate to use unrestricted for the parcel tax because the state has identified that revenue source as unrestricted revenue versus what the voters did, which was said, fine, but we're going to make it restricted and require you to do an annual plan. So that's why the the measure R will say lives within the unrestricted general fund. It has its own resource, it's not in the unrestricted resource. It's a little code of all these numbers, so it has its own identifiers. So I just want to make sure that we understand that the state has already deemed parcel taxes as unrestricted revenue. It's by way of the voters and the annual plan by which it is marked restricted for our particular district. Thank you so much, Gerardo, for that explanation.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Drouhy.
Yeah, just one last comment, this is primarily just to, I know this is Ralph's, Metz was probably last meeting and then it was last meeting and then obviously Mr. Dillatory just finalized his his last meeting, last time around. Sometimes in this district, what I've noticed, just coming from outside looking in, it it's so often to look at areas that things are not happening or areas that we always have to improve, but without really looking at how successful you are. And I, and I, and I want to, I want to repeat, and I, and so for for Ralph, Dillatory have been here for a long time. A lot of you has been for a long time. If you compare SMUSD to most districts in the state of California, we do well. The rankings, where our students go, when you stack up against the county, the results of what students do wonderful work. So I guess this is more or less for Ralph and Mr. Dillatory, I know, I don't know if he's listening or not. It's not just, it, yeah, you guys are always involved in the muck. It's hard to see, it's hard to see what you're doing well, but but you you stack up and I mean, I'm in a conversation with superintendents throughout the state and throughout the county and so on. So the SMUSD is the envy over the other districts, they always ask us, how are you guys doing this? How are you guys doing that? Your students, look, look as performing arts, look at the activities your students involve in, look at the achievement. So so so, so it's Ralph, thank you. I I I know you started saying, making some of these comments. Just just recognize, as we go through a budget, sometimes we talk about deficit spending, this and that. Just realize what the decisions you guys made all these years has has really put this district in a place where it is admired by most, most people, even though sometimes you don't hear yourselves in the in the district. So, thank you.
Yeah, I thank you, Dr. Drouhy. A, I think that's, that's important to recognize the great work of a board member Metzer and a board member Dillatory. And, yeah, we we do tend to, we tend to hear more people that have issues than people that have compliments. And I think it all stems from the fact that we know, we we know we have an engagement gap, an opportunity gap, an achievement gap, whatever you want to call it, we know that exists. And as long as that exists, that's what drives us to address that. And we fail, we fail repeatedly, but we keep getting up and we keep working and pushing forward. And we judge ourselves by that student that we have not succeeded with. So, yeah, at some point, we should sit back and be like, yeah, we did some of this stuff really well, but we are driven, we are driven by by that child that that we do not meet where they are. And I think that's why we keep coming back and doing this. I think that's what you do, that's what Dr. Moore does, all the professionals that work in this district are driven by that child that we have not met. And that is what keeps us going, that was, keeps us pushing at this. I mean, Maria, that sums up Maria's commitment to this board right there. Anyway, we could go off on this all night, I know we have a vote to take, I'm going to call the vote. Laurie?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Do we still have Brianna? No, I think Brianna had to probably go be a student. I'm going to vote yes, and then in his last vote as a SMMUSD board member, Mr. Metzer?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Metzer. Which now brings us to discussion item F1, which I believe will be Carrie and Steve Masetti.
Carrie, you're muted there.
Sarah, if I could share my screen, that would be lovely.
Yes, just made you a co-host.
Okay, thank you. And let me switch it. Okay, are you seeing the full picture of it?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Dr. Drouhy and Board of Education, Carrie Upton, Chief Operations Officer. And I'm joined by Steve Masetti, our bond program manager. We are very, very excited that this brings a culmination to a large amount of look and study meetings and discussions for us to help to propose and give recommendations on how we might spend the remaining, allocate the remaining funds from Measure SMS to make our schools more functional, better and and improve their learning capacity. So our agenda for today, we're going to talk a little bit about the profit process of how we came to this. I'm going to speak for a moment, then I'll turn it over to Steve. He'll guide us through the process, talk about the budget, I'll talk about the decision criteria. We'll move through the sites and the proposed scenarios and then we'll conclude with the most important part, with the Facility District Advisory Committee's recommendation. So we will take you through that. Before I get going, I just want to say that a lot of people participated in these discussions, as Steve will will list. But I particularly want to thank Barbara Chivelli and Michael Burke, our two design managers in the FIP office, who really, really took this and carried this all the way through along with their assistant Kelsey Davis and the other parts of the FIP staff who really moved this forward. And as we go along, we'll talk about. Uh, and as we go along, we'll talk about the principals, uh, and the site, uh, committee's involvement and all the community members who participated. So just a little bit in our previous planning, uh, just because this was a question we wanted to come up with, which is. Uh, I'm going to go just a little bit in through some of our history, in two thousand and five, uh, the hour schools plan was started, which was, uh. Our first attempt in many years to do a master plan. Um, it was developed, uh, it did not include it, ed- educational specifications. And it was focused on campus, campus fixes and not really a full master plan. And it was pushed up a little bit to get it in place for the bond measure in two thousand and six, measure BB, which passed. The hour campus pan- plan, uh, was completed around two thousand and eight, but it was never adopted by the district. Or was a sequel done on the entire process, uh, California Environmental Quality Act, uh, Sequa. Uh, but instead, it was moved to doing the individual, uh, projects and schematics were done for some of the elementary projects, but they were unf- unfunded. Uh, and we moved forward with measure BB, which had a lot of, uh, pro- projects, including Edison Elementary, but mostly focused on the middle and the high schools. Um, in two thousand and twelve, there was a decision to go ahead and pursue, not purse, pursue, uh, measure ES. Uh, and, uh, but no new planning was done, uh, but voters approved it, uh, and, uh, approved measure ES, and we moved forward with measure ES. But technology took, took away, took off, but we paused on the rest of the movement as we were finishing up BB. Then in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, a decision was made, uh, to do our window paint floor modernizations. That was based mostly on our LCAP scores, because what it showed our facilities were really lagging was windows, paints and floors. So we started that process, then we added air conditioning to that process, we moved forward with the, uh, uh, Santa Monica. High school, uh, plan, uh, and that's when we started and set up what we called at that time, the ready, set, go plan. Which was a plan for us to develop a full process of master planning, which started with the Ed specs. And other things, our accessibility plan, our, uh, sustainability plan, our needs assessment. That was going to lead us to the point where we would be ready for a potential twenty twenty bond with master plans at each school and projects. However, the timing was right in two thousand and eighteen, and we went ahead and went out for measure SMS and M, and they were approved overwhelmingly by voters. So in some ways, we're a little lagging from that plan, uh, that we had set up in two thousand and sixteen, but we're finally coming to the end of that. Where we've now done these deep assessments and the master planning for each of the elementary schools and middle schools in Santa Monica. Uh, Malibu's on a slightly different path and track, but that's where we got to. Uh, Steve, would you like to walk us through the process and tell me next when you want me to change slides?
Sure, thank you, Carrie. Uh, so the the idea here, um, our goal is to get our campuses aligned with the Ed specifications. Uh, unlike some districts, we don't just prepare the Ed specs and submit them to CDE so that we are compliant. Uh, we're actually using them to try to create, uh, ideal learning conditions. Uh, to that end, we had our architects, um, assess our existing campuses and identify how we get there. In other words, how do we get from where we are to where we would match the Ed specs? Let's go to the next one, Carrie. Uh, so. Our architects, when, when, I think in December of two thousand and nineteen, the board approved the elementary school architect slightly before that for the middle school architects. Effectively, we split the elementary schools between three architects, that's TPB, DSK and Johnson Favreau. And then had Berliner and A4E on the middle schools, go ahead, Carrie. So the documentation that we sent to the architects, um, in order, in addition to rather lining, uh, aligning with the Ed specs, um, which of course we sent to the architects. We also need to align with some other, other plans that we have, so that's our food services plan, our sustainability plan, uh, and our ADA transition plan. And of course, we also provided the facilities condition assessments, which, uh, I believe were done by M and O in early twenty twenty. Um, and provided the existing campus plans to them, so this is all the information they had to begin with. Uh, now, now, for our process, this is an example just from Lincoln. Uh, but we, we actually did this nine times over, um, once for each campus, and you can see. The the path that we followed, I mean, this architect happened to show it as a trail. Um, but you can see where we started going through community engagement and then developing some plans and more community engagement. And then finally getting to, uh, where we're able to present this today. Uh, go ahead, Carrie. So, uh, an overview of our site meetings, this is something again that we did at every campus, uh, we start by meeting with the principal and, uh, the site core leadership that is. Named by the principal or rather, uh, assigned by the principal. Uh, did that to develop the types of projects that would be moving forward, then we had our spring community meetings. Um, and at those meetings, we had, uh. I think some, some very good input that that first round of meetings of community meetings was to help develop the projects. And then we we've, after that, during summer, and we had our techs go back and do their, uh, do a little more work and preliminary designs and. And estimates, then in fall, we came back, met again with the principal, the core leadership and and had a final community meeting, which was based more on prioritization. All right, Carrie. So, our site and community outreach, um, this was a. This is a, uh, I I think we did a lot of outreach here. Um, you know, the, the, the core meter, the core leadership meetings, those are the ones that were selected by the, uh, principal. Um, there, we don't have to do a lot of outreach there because the principal picked their group and had them, uh, participate. But for our community meetings, we we really tried to, um, to reach out, so, uh, the district sent out about ten thousand emails, uh, each time through Blackboard or Peachjar. Um, to our parents and guardians, letting them know that these meetings were happening. Uh, we did a press release, uh, we invited the neighborhood associations directly. Uh, of course, we had it on Twitter and and Facebook. I think we had pretty good turnout, uh, I would say that our turnout for these community meetings was better than. Much of the turnout that we get for, uh, our in-person meetings. Overall, we had about two hundred and forty unique participants, and by that, I mean, um, we're not counting people twice. So if they came to both community meetings, they get counted once, uh, the principal doesn't get counted. Eight or ten times for for the meetings that they attend, they they count as one attendee, so. Um, overall, we got input from about two hundred and forty, uh, participants, go ahead, Carrie. So here, here's a, a schedule of all the meetings, I mean. Most recent in my mind is October, because I think we had, looks like we had six or seven meetings, um, during October. Uh, just with the community plus a a bunch of core leadership meetings, uh, that month as well, so. Uh, that was a rough month for us, but, um, beyond that, you can see dating back to February, and we started this process in January. But you can see dating back to February, we started our meetings with, uh. With the campuses and with the principals and then worked our way through this series of, uh, of meetings. Next. So this is, uh, an example, um, this is from McKinley. And, uh, this is showing how we, how the architects rather, um, use the Ed specs as a guide to. Um, go through the assessments process as well as, uh, do their, their preliminary designs. Uh, and and the idea here is to match the, the new learning spaces up with the educational specifications. Okay. Okay, so now talking about the schedule, um, thi- this was, the schedule got stretched about, uh, two months. Um, a lot of that happened kind of right in the middle of it, you know, of course, at the beginning of COVID. Uh, we ideally were going to be bringing this to the, um, to the board, this presentation tonight to the board, uh, in October. Um, but as I mentioned, we had a whole bunch of community meetings in October, uh, so obviously now we're here tonight. Um, but we are on track, if if this is approved next week to begin, uh. Procurement for design services in, and January. Okay, so talking about the budget. Overall, we have, uh, about ninety-eight million allocated for this work, uh, we recommend, or ninety-seven and a half million. We recommend allocating eighty-eight million of it and and keeping the remainder. Well, we're going to use it as a contingency, but ideally, if we can get the projects through on budget, uh, it would. Uh, free up the, the, whatever that remainder is at the end to do an additional project. Um, or perhaps even just do the design of a, of a future big project. Um, projects beyond that, and you're, Carrie's going to show you. He's going to show you several ways that we could get to the eighty-eight million, but he's also going to, I think, show you an overall number that's significantly larger than eighty-eight million. So for the projects that aren't funded by this round of work, um, we will, th- those will need to be funded by future bonds. Uh, so, I'm going to turn it back over to Carrie to talk about, uh, priori- prioritization criteria. And describe the potential projects, and then I'll be back when we, uh, talk about the FDAC.
Great, uh, so as we looked at this, a number of ideas floated to the top. And and also, we're already sort of part of things that we are looking at as far as the, uh, education specifications. And some of the criterias that sort of led us to some of our decisions, uh, one of the major ones was, uh, replacing portable classrooms. It's something that we've talked about in measure ES, MS, uh, uh, sorry, me- measure, uh. And, uh, as, yeah, sorry, and measures ES and measure BB, and we talked about an SMS. A total right now in Santa Monica, we have forty-two portables, uh, many of these are thirty and forty years old, they had about a ten years shelf life, and they've been around with us for a long time. We've also talked about incl- increasing, uh, class sizes, uh, as part of the construction, uh, mode, which is part of the, something that's very important in the Ed specs.
But that was classroom sizes.
Classroom sizes, thank you, uh, uh, improving outdoor learning spaces, creating space for preschools on our elementary school campuses. Uh, we did note that Edison and Muir Smash are our newest schools, where we have five elementary schools that are sixty to eighty years old. Uh, measures BB and ES focused a lot on the middle schools in Samo High. Um, uh, where it didn't focus as much on the elementaries, we did a good bit of work on elementaries with the window paint floor, the air conditioning. Uh, those projects, but not as much with sort of newer things. Um, and we really wanted to elevate the facilities, uh, in a way that directly improve education. So instead of looking at, uh, admin, our parking lots or everything, we wanted to really focus on the education things. Uh, we also looked at sequencing, because sometimes it was best if we did, you know, this happened, then that happened, then this happened. And those were all part of the consideration, uh, and the important thing is that we are completed at the end of each phase. So if we don't get any more funds, a school can continue to happen. So we don't have a situation where, yeah, we need to build this, but we're left lagging before the next thing happens. So those are some of the decision criteria. So with each of the sites, uh, with part of the assessment was also a thought about a full master plan. You know, about what, you know, a campus plan that actually would take us is what happens if we really. Actualize the Ed specs over time, and where do we go and how do we get there and what's the process? So it's a guide, it's not really a rule for us, but it's, it was something, it's a guide. And we'll be coming back to talk to you about these later in a much bigger way, as we talk about when we, when we go into the, uh, Sequa, uh, California Environmental Quality Process. Uh, so each of the campuses has a plan of how we would actually actualize the Ed specs over ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years of time. And by doing so, this really allowed us to determine what the first projects would be. So for each of the, uh, campuses, uh, we created this medley sheet, uh, that says what the first projects were. And we also put what the priorities of the school were, and we had the, uh, uh, architects work with an estimator to estimate those costs. Uh, uh, escalated out about a year and a half to figure out when and and how much those costs would be. Uh, so, uh, you know, like, like at Grant here, I'm not going to go in depth at every school, but at like at Grant here, there was a real desire for this, uh, one-story building that would replace the portable classrooms. There was also a desire for library renovations into the historic courtyard, early education in the south campus, so these were some of the ones at Grant. Uh, we also had a list of what they were, how they would impact portables and outdoor learning, what the cost would be both in, uh, construction and projects. Uh, well, Roger, similarly, the campus plan, which really rethinks Real Rogers in a large way. We've talked for years about the possibility, along with Edison, of replacing this campus in a, in a significant way. So this is, would be a stepped way to do it, and this was one of our guides. Uh, it also employs the church parking, uh, the church lot and how we would use it. So this was our campus plan, you know, sort of our structure of how we would get there. And the first projects there, a new building, uh, early education building, uh, for child, uh, for kindergarten, uh, uh. And preschool, uh, so the fields, and that would help us replace about six portables. There was also, uh, some priority of, you know, the next project was one that was deferred, so you couldn't do it until after you do project one. Uh, project two was really taking a look at the outdoor classroom areas between the two, the finger buildings or the food or, uh, some additional parking drop off. So here's the sheet on which ones were floated to the top there, and these priorities were really driven by the school sites. When you see a priority, it's from the school site. At Edison, our newest school, we took a deep look at this campus and what it would need, uh, and we talked about some things that would really enhance and make this campus work a little better. Uh, including outdoor learning areas, courts, covered walkways, a better drop off on Kansas, because that street is so narrow and it's really challenging and and not as safe. Uh, renovations to the admin area, uh, fixing solar chimneys. Now, some things of, like the solar chimneys, we're going to be able to actually do this project in a much smaller way as a maintenance project. Uh, with maintenance funds, that's a good thing, we sort of be able to shift that one over, or, uh, eventually getting them a second MPR. Uh, so here's the list for that. At Smash Muir, another new school, we had a little question of where we're going, sort of with this campus, you know, we've had some talk about shifting the program here a little bit. So we really took a look at what would happen, uh, sort of the things that floated to the top was a new admin building in front, mainly because, and with, uh, additional classrooms, special education classrooms. But that really is because safety and security with the placement of the admin doesn't really quite work where it is. But if we were able to move the admin out, then we could renovate the media center, which would really be an important thing to the whole school, uh, to the two schools and how they worked. Uh, there was look at renovating and looking at the classroom buildings, outdoor learning, and eventually adding a new multipurpose space. So this campus also would have a second multipurpose space, and there was a couple of ways to do that. Uh, at Franklin, uh, this is another campus that's sort of looking that it sort of needed a lot of shifts, but it really requires a lot of big moves. Because we have so many portables on this campus. Uh, and it's a very tight campus with a very large population, so it was very challenging, a lot of ways to think about it. Uh, so the first move was a really interesting one, I mean, a real priority there is getting in there and creating what we call the L-shaped building. Which would be a two-story building, which would replace a lot of portables. Uh, but the challenge is, that's a big, big move, and before we could do it, we needed to make some other moves. So we looked at a new maker space, uh, some front lawn improvements, um, some, uh. Making the PK TK yard, the outdoor classroom area out by the alley area, there was a couple of different other steps that were really taken seriously. At McKinley, it's another school, bigger campus, uh, that we really felt we could enhance in a lot of ways. It's another one that has, uh, a number of portables, nine portables that we'd want to get rid of. So there was a real way of rethinking this campus and rethinking, rethinking its structure over time, this is a long-term thing. While we respect the historic core of the campus, how we sort of build around and, uh, make an adjunct and, uh, relate well to it. So the things that really pushed forward is a new classroom building in the front that would have, uh, a, a new admin area, drop off pickup, uh, two-story. Uh, also, the looking at the cafeteria, fixing a lot of ways, the the challenges with elevators and access on that whole campus. Uh, sort of tying that all together and then re- realigning the parking lot over to the alley and sort of in a way that we could have a more, much cleaner player. I'm going through these quickly, but it just allows you to know some of the things we've gone through and things we've taken seriously. Uh, at Roosevelt, it was another one where we really wanted to sort of reshape and rethink some of the campus of how it would work. Uh, so we sort of took a look, this is Montana looking up, um. Of how this campus might rethink itself, uh, this is from, uh. Oh, I'm going to forget the name of the street in the back, looking back towards Montana, uh.
Lincoln looking, looking, uh, southeast.
Yeah, Lincoln and.
No, Alta.
Alta, thank you, Alta's the better backstreet that I was trying to think of the name, um. So on this medley, um, coming in here for, uh, preschool and, uh, TK, a new sort of. Area there, a little off the main street, you know, off the main street of Montana, pulling them back here. Uh, the big move here to get rid of the lot of portables would be a two-story building that we call the Boomerang Building. Uh, that would come out here and, but it's a second move. Uh, we have to sort of set these two or three things up first, there was also talk about a maker space, uh, a cafeteria that actually served the, the number of students we have here. Um, sort of some playfield adjustments, there'd be a couple of other moves, but th- these would be the ones to start our way through the process. At the middle schools, we've already done quite a bit of work, but you know, the middle schools also didn't get as much window paint floor type of upgrade as as the elementaries. So there was a real look at what we do. I mean, we're building the Performing Arts Center and the rehearsal space. So there's a way of sort of rethinking this campus. Because of the push here is the science and technology, the big thing was replacing the seventies building, which I have to say is a little dreadful at this time and it does not serve us scientific, you know, for our science and STEM classes. So replacing that with a new sort of two-story lab building. The other thing that doesn't work is some of our outdoor areas don't really flow. So there was a whole thought of rethinking the sixth grade quad, the seventh grade quad, really rethinking how those spaces work, doing some of the window paint floor work and also some cafeteria things, which really enhance. You know, it's a little stark and severe that campus as it is. So ways to sort of lighten it, freshen it and make it a sort of better working and living and learning space. Lincoln was a lot of, was a challenge because, you know, we have a lot of old buildings there that are no longer really functioning for our needs. But how to get there was a real question. And I have to say, we're still not there as far as what we feel good about the process to really rethink the campus. Certainly, the library building has made a huge difference on how that works. And we want to maintain the historic core building, but some of the other buildings are added later. So this is one way of sort of rebuilding out the campus, which includes some renovation, like the renovation of the shops building, but does include some replacement of things and sort of moving the theater, creating a new gym pool experience. This is another option, another build-out plan. We're going to have to take a lot more time thinking about where we're going with Lincoln and what its goals are to fit everything on this campus and make it work. So this is where we're headed. So some of the things we talked about immediately was renovating the shops building, renovating the art and music building, renovating the theater. We're doing a lot of that as maintenance, I have to say. We've painted the walls, we're getting new seats, we're getting new carpet. That's going to help that last at least until a time when we might think about either a major renovation or a replacement. The three hundreds building is a bit of a challenge. We have special ed on the first floor. We desperately need restrooms for those life skill classes. We also talked about adding an elevator and opening up, you know, making it accessible to the second floor. But that's a building that might want to go away in time very soon. So it was a really question as to how much we should do. But I will say the restrooms for special ed are a priority now. And then the Obama Center, where we've already done a lot of work, but we did have our PPPL, PPPL work that we were going to do to make the outdoor learning areas function, create the maker spaces and eventually add the new maker space buildings in this area. So those were projects that we had talked about also on our list. So that gets us to our scenarios. And the scenarios, once we developed them sort of out of the design, out of the decision criteria, out of the site and community meeting priorities, we met with senior cabinet twice. We met with the board facility subcommittee twice. We met multiple times with a group that's been so helpful, that's made the real difference, our Facility District Advisory Committee Subcommittee. And then we also met with the Facility District Advisory Committee twice, trying to work on our scenarios. So I'm just going to run through a couple of the scenarios, but just to show you our process more than sort of where it went. We sort of walked through them. This one was a, let's replace a number of portables, but also do some work at Jams and Lincoln. And this was one way to get to our eighty-eight million. Number two was a way that we just said, let's just do big moves for campuses, big moves, get there. We do big buildings at all these, this replaces, I think, twenty-seven portables. This was one way that that feel, you know, the committees and everyone felt like some of the other schools would not really be happy if we did something that significant. I mean, it leaves Franklin out of the mix and that really was not working. There was another plan, which was don't do anything big, but do a little bit of every, little bit of something for everybody. And this plan was also rejected. It just felt like for our bond and for what we've been talking about, especially around the portables, we needed to make some big moves. So this one was pushed out. And then we started playing in with these, you know, this is an all elementary plan that's going to look a lot like something you're going to see later. This was another thought that included a lot more Lincoln jams and but did smaller things sort of at the elementaries. Scenario six, this was a really good one that came out of our FDAC. It was, let's do the big moves with a few small things at the middle schools. But what if we reduced scope? So we went back and we talked to our architects and said, what if we reduce scope? If we take things away, if we make it less? Ultimately, our committee really felt that this plan, it didn't finish things. And it would be better to finish things rather than cut back scope. So be more people got more things. So there was a sort of discussion around how we came to this. And then this is another view of that with sort of the same idea, but just focusing on our five main elements, our five oldest elementary schools. So that leads us to our FDAC recommendations. And they, we met this last time on this Monday and for this presentation. And Steve, I think I hand it over to you.
Yeah, I can, I can add something here. So Carrie alluded to this earlier, but we recognize that if we brought you pages and pages of various projects and threw it all on the table and said, you guys pick, that would be exceptionally unfair. So we also know that you've created a Facility District Advisory Committee to advise you on facility issues. So we have really utilized them in this process. Several of the members, of course, were participants in the community meetings. You know, but I, we showed you a graphic earlier that represented some thirty hours worth of community meetings. And they needed the time to dig into this. And so what we did is we created a special subcommittee of the FDAC members. It was Joan Krennic, who's our chair, Judith Meister, who has been a member of the committee since it was the BBAC, and then Alexis Dennis, who has elementary school students. And we asked them to really dig into this and they did impressively. So what we're going to do is I'm going to ask the three of them to speak. I think Joan can maybe give us a little background on what the FDAC and specifically the subcommittee considered here. Then we'll have Judith present the the actual FDAC recommendation. And then Alexis will give some perspective from the committee and thoughts with respect to prioritization. And although what you're going to hear is the FDAC's recommendation, I'll tell you that the FIP department independently agrees with it and would be our recommendation as well. So Joan, if you're available, if you could maybe start us off and then we'll go straight to Judith and Alexis.
Sure, as has been mentioned, we decided to develop a subcommittee basically because this is such a complicated and there's so much information that needed to be really have a deep dive into. So we needed to do that. Our subcommittee spent a lot of time, we attended meetings, we did a lot of independent review. We had a lot of information from the FIP group and a lot of discussion, a lot of very good discussion. I mean, this is a complicated task. We've got four hundred and thirty million dollars worth of projects for which we have eighty-eight million to allocate right now. So it was really important for us to understand, to really understand the various campus needs, the potential strategic impact of the projects, individual campus priorities, and how these proposed projects would support twentieth century learning environments. We did spend some time talking about the priorities and generally agreed with the priorities that were identified earlier. Certainly, we want to, you know, respect the language that we had in the bond saying, you know, suggesting that we would be removing aging portable, so that was a priority. We also wanted to focus on projects that would have a direct student impact and direct student benefit. So some of the administration type upgrades and things maybe got pushed down a little bit for right now. We did decide to focus primarily on the elementary schools, as Carrie also indicated, because we, the middle schools have had some recent work and the middle schools, the elementary schools really have a lot of need. So like I said, we met several times, we had a lot of discussion. This is very complicated. You know, there's no, there's no perfect solution. We do feel good about the solution that Judith's going to talk about. And we feel strongly that there's, you know, a lot of thought was put into it and a lot of, you know, evaluation of different alternatives. We would go back and forth, we didn't settle on an alternative solution at the beginning. We kept going back and forth and we kept modifying it and perfecting it. And I feel like it's a good solution. It's not, it's not going to make everyone happy because not everyone's going to get what they probably feel like they want. But we, you know, we think this is a good starting point. This is going to get us a lot of bang for a buck and it's going to have a big impact on our district. So Judith, why don't you talk a little bit about what we recommended? I think Judith's here, Judith here. Oh, Judith, we can't hear you.
Yeah, we can't hear you still. You're unmuted, but there you go. Maybe. No, we can't hear you yet.
Right.
So last week Judith also had problems with the microphone. So perhaps.
She's working on it.
One moment, she's almost there.
Under her phone, I'm guessing.
Ah, she's popping up someplace else. So.
Sorry. Okay, I'm going to leave this meeting, I'm so sorry. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, you might mute one of the other one, yes.
Okay, all right, sorry. I, yeah, I had my computer fixed and now I can't be heard on Zoom. So I'm very sorry about this. But in any case, to go back to what Joan was saying, you know, we recognized, and I will say that I have been on this committee from, you know, from the BB days and when the first campus plan came out. And, you know, clearly, the priority for many years has been to remove the portables. And so, you know, as we looked at this, that was one of, you know, the main factors. And so we looked at, you know, how we could do it at all of the schools, meaning the five schools that have the most portables. And we recognized that we couldn't do that. We just didn't have enough funds to replace them at Grant and Franklin as well as the other schools. And so, you know, after a lot of thought and deliberation, we've come up with this scenario that has three major moves in terms of new buildings at Rogers, at McKinley and Roosevelt. And the recommendation has more medium moves at two of the schools, at Grant and Franklin, and some small improvements at the middle schools, which received a lot of attention with prior bonds. And so, you know, mainly what we're, we looked at Grant and, you know, the other priorities for Grant were to do the library renovation as well as the courtyard renovation and consolidate the pre-K and kindergarten yards. And we felt that this would be important at this time at Grant. It would benefit, you know, a large number of students. Certainly, the library will be a significant improvement and it will also offer outdoor learning experiences. And we would look at Franklin in the same way that the maker space, which is a new building, would, and the new outdoor patios for the classroom improvements would provide outdoor learning. And so we felt that for Franklin and Grant, that these, although it wasn't the biggest moves, it would give a needed improvement that would enhance the education for the students and that for the next bond, Franklin and Grant would be priorities. And the big moves at Rogers and McKinley and Roosevelt, you know, really will result in, you know, significant removal of portables and, you know, as well as creating outdoor, outdoor learning opportunities. And so we felt that in balance, this would really be fair for these elementary schools. We're recognizing that Edison and Muir Smash are not included in this recommendation. And as, you know, Carrie said, they, you know, Edison was a new school built back under BB. And Muir and Smash are more recent. So we felt that there was justification for focusing on the older schools. And as far as the middle schools went, we didn't, we did want to include some improvements. And, you know, I, I will certainly support what Carrie said about jams is, although there has been a lot of work, jams really needed a lot of work. And but enhancing the library will be a significant improvement for, you know, the whole student body. But looking to the future, I think improving the outdoor spaces at jams would be very important. And as Carrie explained, you know, there was really not a lot that could be done at Lincoln with the monies that are available. So this would be some, you know, some significant renovation of one of the buildings. But the focus is on the elementary schools. So, you know, we spent, as, you know, as has been said, you know, because this is complicated and, you know, it's one bond and, you know, there's needs that won't be addressed. But we think it's a really good start, will make significant visible improvements at each of the schools. So we're really, I think the whole committee supported this. And so that's our recommendation. Thank you.
Alexis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be brief because I think we've covered a lot. And, you know, after a lot of investigation, we really left this in unison about how we felt about it. As a whole, the committee decided that we wanted an elementary school-focused program. And so from there, we went back and looked at projects. And I think what was really important to us is that the projects we put forth would be student-focused. And so some of the front-of-house yard work and landscaping work would be nice. Some of the administrative work would be nice, but it wasn't the first projects that we wanted to put forth. And so from there, we looked at it again from the lens of the bond measure commitment to removing portables. And then from there, the next way we studied the projects to put forth was not just the idea of outdoor learning from a place of respite of someplace to have outdoor green space, but to put true program outside that could flow indoors and outdoors. And we've seen an acceleration through this past year of public interest in that. And so these projects wanted to speak to that as well. And so from there, these were the, these were the choices that made the most sense that would leave a clear path for the next round of projects.
Great, thank you, Alexis. And now I'm just going to walk through them, just so you understand what we're, what's on this list. Oh, before I do that, let me just say, so this, like I said, this allows us to remove twenty-four portables, six at Will Rogers, three at Franklin, nine at McKinley and six at Roosevelt. And it adds outdoors, almost all of these projects, except for the restrooms, adds outdoor spaces, outdoor learning areas. So it sort of meets criteria on both of those two things. So Grant, the idea is to go in and really rethink their library. Take out the computer lab, sort of realign it and fix it. And one of the things is you've got these two sort of dead zones on either side, one between the auditorium and the library and one between the library and the cafeteria. And it's a way to, and so the thought was how to open up these whole of these areas and make them usable learning spaces. So here's a, here's a look, looking from the auditorium through the library into the cafeteria of how this might open up the space and really engage for outdoor learning. And then we matched that with redoing and rethinking the courtyard. The historic courtyard, which is really important, has some great. The historic courtyard, which is really important, has some great trees, some legacy trees, sort of maintaining and keeping those, but making this space much more usable. Right now it's sort of an area that the kids sort of look at from as they walk up and down the sidewalks, but how to really engage those spaces. And by doing so, opening that up all the way into the auditorium space. No, sorry, into the library space, excuse me. Another one was moving and shifting the kindergarten pre-K. Right now they're sort of in the back behind the cafeteria at the alley. We sort of put them there rather quickly. And the idea would be to shift them into the front so that the PK and the kindergarten would be right in the same area. So we'd have all the kindergarten PK TK in the same area and they'd have their own yards. And that would be towards the front of the school with still barriers around them. So it's a really good idea to engage these spaces. The Will Rogers, this is a big move. And it sort of is the big move to sort of start us on the way to, to sort of rethink this campus. And it is adding a single story building that would be predominantly a PK TK kindergarten building with outdoor learning areas. Also, it sort of creates the potential alignment of creating a drop off parking zone between the campus on the north side and the housing that's there, the apartment buildings. We saw always, we'd like a little bit of division between those. So it also does the playyards, the play fields, and these are all major first steps for what would come next. At Franklin, the idea is coming in and putting a maker space. It's sort of in the middle of the campus, but it gets through, rid of three portables. And it really engages the project based learning that we've been talking about. Two large maker space rooms with auxiliary support spaces and a maker yard that the entire student body would be able to use, which would really be deeply engaging and sort of move us forward as a good first step to set up the next steps later. So a building, you know, all of these are, they're not full renderings. They're just an idea of what the building could be, but some way that really grabs and captures the imagination of the maker spaces of what they could, of what they can be and how they could engage the students. We'd also come in along the alleyway and fix the outdoor learning area. That whole space is unusable as it is. It is not accessible, not particularly safe. So we would come in and we would adjust and sort of level that area off, put in some shade structures, really allow a better indoor-outdoor learning area between those classrooms and the outdoor. Really great project would really import, make, make a big difference to the school. At McKinley, we'd make another big move. This would be our biggest move with a two-story building that adds classrooms and add a new admin area, a drop off area, a more secure admin experience, also allows us to create a better accessibility to the second floor. And just sort of gives you a lot of sort of shapes of, of eight classrooms in this space. Really opens it up. It allows us to get rid of nine portables and gives us a really sort of different feel for this whole campus. And sort of, it's a good move to, for what would come next. Here's just a look of between that building and the historic building. What we try to do is make sure that what's being designed with the old matches and integrates really nicely with the historic mission building and trying to find a way to bring those two together. At Roosevelt, we go to the back of the campus and add this new PK TK K yard. And we would add with new classrooms and K yard. Like I said before, this is a really good move for what would come next and would help get us, get rid of six portables, these four and the two in the front. And really sort of engage that area and also help with the drop off of the students there. It's just a look at this. At jams, we've hit the library. The library is a great, would be a great space to sort of rethink. If, I don't know how many of you have been in the library recently, but it's, could use some, some help, especially considering that Lincoln got a new library. It's like, we really could do some really good stuff to make this library more functional. Part of that is really opening up the library courtyard, which is the space between it that right now is a sort of a dumping ground space for, for just old furniture. We could really engage that and make that into a really great outdoor learning space. The school's very excited. If there's one thing this will really impact and all of, all the students. And then as I, as I spoke before at Lincoln, we just need to go in on that first floor of the 300s and put in some restrooms for our special ed students. We have a lot, we have a large number of life skills students at that campus. So that's our ideas. And I'm going to go back to the sort of overall sheet. This is the recommendation that's coming from our FDAC of what we would do with this 88 million. The that if you say, it, it, we'll have a discussion tonight and then we'll come back on next meeting on the 17th for you to approve and this are really actually to give direction to allocate the budget. And then we will work with the architects to come back and you will then approve the architect. So this is the process. So this is a discussion item. We will come back. There'll be more on a consent that says, yes, let's do it. Let's realign the budget to this. And then from there, after that, you'll see the architects and we'll come back with the sequel work and everything else we have to do to get ready for it. It'll take at least a year and a half before the first project sort of rolls off into construction as we do design and we do DSA work. And we will move forward with this and try and get these projects happening and impacting students. So that's where we are with it. And I will say that because we've done this amount of planning, as we had originally planned with our ready, set, go plan, we are now set up, if we were to go out for another bond, we are ready to do that. And we are ready to be able to say, here are the projects, here's what we're going to do, here's how we're going to do it, which has been one of the requests from our community of having a real good idea of how we might move forward. So that brings, that brings us into any clarifying questions? I know it was a lot of information. And then I'm sure we have some public comment.
Great. So Carrie, if you could give us the screen back. Step one. Terrific. So the first thing I will do is ask the board members if they do have any clarifying questions. As we do have three, three public comments, but if there's clarifying, we'll get to that first. Clarifying? Okay, so let's go to Board Vice President Lieberman and do our public comment.
Yes, as John said, we have three speakers. So each of you will have three minutes. The speakers are Nikki Kohlhoff, Ruth Ann Lehrer and Esther Hickman.
Hi, Nikki Kohlhoff again. You know, listening to this, are there some great ideas in it? Sure. But this is why we told voters not to pass a blank check bond in 2018 because you guys are coming back for another one. This is like, hey, what can we do with 88 million? That's not a plan. We should have had a plan before passing a bond that works for certain goals and a fixed amount of money. I mean, this is just an insane way to, it's not planning. First of all, it doesn't meet with community priorities. So when folks asked to get rid of portables, they wanted to do that, but to free up open space. So I'm not seeing, except for, I think in one of these, building a two-story structure to get rid of the portable so that there's more open space, because at schools like Franklin, the kids aren't even allowed to run on the blacktop because it's too crowded. I can't believe we're spending money on preschools first. That was not supposed to be the priority. I don't see anything in here about the request for bathrooms across the board. Kids can't go to the bathroom at the elementary schools because they're so gross and they hold it all day. Middle schools too. And I don't see a priority for that. Using the ed specs is a mistake. Those were not vetted by the community or approved by the community. Their main goal is to build larger classrooms and that is for larger class sizes. The ed specs are built to the maximum class size. And that's not what we want in our district. It's not what we raised our taxes for to lower class sizes. That's what we raise our taxes for. And so to build new buildings just to make bigger classrooms to hold more kids is the opposite of what our community wants. Spending another penny on PBL, I think you've heard loud and clear all the way through the spring in the budget discussions. People don't want to spend another penny over there. It's got 74 kids. 12 million already spent. I mean, it's a ridiculous spending. Spending anything on admin spaces also doesn't work. Next, we need to do a historic resources plan before moving forward on any of this. LAUSD has done it. I don't understand why we're behind on that. And then thinking about how to spend the community money, it's not, we're not looking big picture. We overspent on the jams auditorium to 44 million. The district says, well, we aren't spending it all because parts SMC, but we, the community, the taxpayer, we are paying all of that. And we would have rather had a civic center auditorium redone than a $44 million middle school auditorium. Like it's not the community priority. And then also if we do adaptive reuse of the history building on Samo High, which is what you guys are hearing about nonstop, nobody wants to tear down the history building except for you guys. And we could save just by the district's back of the envelope, $30 million if we don't do that new experimental building on Samo High that we don't need. So $30 million probably goes to a lot more portables and gets us through a lot more of this plan. And so you really need to do the adaptive reuse study at Samo High and stop wasting our money. Thank you.
Ruth Ann Lehrer?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. Nina Fresco and I, on behalf of the Santa Monica Conservancy, have talked to some of you about our interest in the adaptive reuse of the history building at Samo High because of its historic value and its importance to the community as a whole. This does not appear to be feasible in your eyes, but at the same time, we discussed with you the benefits of identifying historic resources at the other campuses. There are obviously ambitious renovation plans underway district wide. And now is the time to identify and evaluate historic resources at all the campuses on, in the district. There was a study done for the district in 2008 by PCR Consulting Group, but wasn't utilized. And this study identified a number of significant historic resources. Franklin, Grant, John Adams, McKinley, Roosevelt and others. The conceptual plans now want to consideration of these sites. In some cases include cosmetic alterations that detract and undermine from the historic integrity of these buildings. What should be avoided would be repeating the error that was made at the San Martin History Building when the entrance canopy was removed sometime in the 1960s. The PCR report is a great beginning and could be expanded to provide more detailed analysis of historic resources as well as guidelines to utilize for future renovation plans at the, at the campuses. This study is really baseline information for you all as you plan with the students and teachers and the community moving forward into the future. We sent you a model of the LAUSD guidelines and, and policies for historic preservation, which is a great model for framework that you might consider. We also know that historic preservation, the conservation and respect for the historic built environment is a very important educational concept to pass along for students. Additionally, that concept reflects the district's commitment to sustainability and should be incorporated into your own sustainability plan. The Santa Monica Conservancy is a nonprofit organization. We would be very happy to cooperate with you moving forward to realize these goals. And we hope in the very near future, as you're moving quickly in planning these projects, to see on your agenda the commissioning for the PCR report to be expanded to a more fully detailed analysis of the historic resources in the district and the policies and procedures to accompany their treatment in the future. We're here to help and we would, we would very much welcome cooperating with you on this in the future. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, we have one more speaker. Esther Hickman.
Hi. Well, thank you for putting that together. I think about the countless hours that the F Doc people have spent and dedicated to make plans that work best for our students. I, I obviously agree with what Nikki and Ruth Ann have said. And obviously I'm an alumni and I have a child entering the district. And it was really wonderful to see in elementary schools and the historic core and at Lincoln Historic Core being honored. And so it'd be wonderful to see continued collaboration with the Conservancy to see that these, these educational opportunities aren't missed. I realize I've spoken to a lot of people and I think one of the biggest concerns is all the misinformation around what adaptive reuse is. And it really opens up possibilities to save money and time. And it's obviously sustainable. And somebody who's gone into construction and facilities and real estate as a profession, it, it bothers me to learn that people are told that spaces can't be created out of existing buildings. And it, it bothers me to learn that people are told it could be more expensive to do this when the actual truth is that it can save time and money. And so I'm just hoping that a study can be done. And of course, if it's just not pragmatic to convert historic buildings into new learning spaces, of course, that's something that the study would reveal. If it doesn't save millions of dollars that could be reallocated to these other elementary and middle school projects, then of course it wouldn't be pragmatic. But it seems, I think that Carrie Upton mentioned an assessment could cost $30,000 to $50,000. And to spend that $50,000 and just learn that maybe millions could be saved. And, and the community would feel really great about when it's time to ask for more money. The community could have the confidence in knowing that the district honored our preservation, our National Preservation Act and honor those opportunities for children to be in those spaces.
Thank you. John, that concludes the public speakers.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you to our speakers. This is a discussion. So I will go right to a board member comments who would like to get in the queue. Wow, I'll go first. I'll go first then Lauren. You raised your hand too slowly. I have a couple of questions for Carrie and, and Steve. So one of them is about the 300 buildings at Lincoln. We know that the 300 buildings at Lincoln are, are not wonderful. They are set to the side of the campus and the bathroom issue is, is, is important. Curious, we talked about this last year and this might be a Florence Culpeper issue and maybe Dr. Mora or somebody else could follow up on this. We had talked about, is there a better way to integrate the students who are using the first floor of the 300 building into, into more centrally into the campus? We know we can't fix those buildings, but right now those are students with some significant needs. And they are kept on the side of the campus there. And we had brought this up last year. So it'd be good to follow up before we do any work in that, in that space. If there is a better, if there are, are alternatives for classroom space for those SII classes and some of those students with significant needs. So that's question one. And maybe we can follow up on that for next week. Question two, I'm just curious on this one. It sounds like it's about $430 million to do everything on this list. We have about 88. So I'm just curious what this, in a perfect world, if we had all that money, what is the timeframe from start to finish, do you think, for all of those projects? And that's a Steve and Carrie question. I'm not sure if you can answer this yet or not. You can answer that on the 17th too, if you prefer.
Sure. I mean, I think we, we need to look into, you know, some of the, the campuses have sequenced projects. So for example, I think Carrie referenced this, in order to do one, you've got to do the next. So if you were saying, if we have all the money in the bank right now and could just start working on it. I mean, we'll, we'll look into that, but it would be, would still be a significant amount of time. Because in addition to the fact that some of them have to happen in sequence, of course, you know, our, for example, we like to work at summer. We like to get as much work done during the summer as we can. But we have to have campuses open for things like playground partnerships and summer school and things like that. So we could lay it out. I mean, the reality is we, we, we expect that the, to get all the way through all of the work to get to the, the master plan level that, that Carrie was talking about. You know, I mean, that could be 20 years. Now that's more than the projects you saw tonight, obviously. But it would be, it would be in the, in decades range.
Okay. And I would actually, you know, just on the 400,000, on the $400 million range, sequencing, you know, we could do a bulk of it, but I would say it. sequencing, you know, we could do a bulk of it, but I would say at least ten years, a little more to get through that first part.
Yeah.
But just because of sequencing and just, you know, not being able to do it all at the time. But I mean, if, you know, if we had, you know, if we had all the money, we could certainly move more quickly than we would be moving with the eighty eight.
I just think it would be curious, because I, I mean, the idea that we would cover everything with one bond is a wish list right now and based on the capacity of our community to bond. So the fact that there's surprise that we went out for additional bonds is in itself surprising. But it would be good to know, I think, moving forward, like, I like how Steve was very clear. Here are projects. Here is what is next on the list to do in a very clear and specific way. It also would be interesting to know, would it take two more bond cycles? Like, what is the cycle of time it would take to get everything done? So our community would have a sense of what it really would, what it really would look like to finish the renovations at all of our elementary schools. And the same thing with our secondary schools. I think it's just something curious to think of. And the last thing I want to mention, the word "community priorities", the community priorities at our schools. Our community priority is educating our children. That's our community priority. We also want to create open spaces where families can come and use our schools when they are not used as schools. And our agreement with the city has accomplished that very well. But when we talk about spaces and we forget about the fact that our core mission is the education of children, I think we get lost a little bit in that. So I just want to remind ourselves what we're here for. I think, Lori, you were next on the list.
Yes, but first, just to pick up on something you just said. You know, this wouldn't be the first time the question you just raised about looking at a total, how much over what period of time, over how many bond measures. That that question has been raised, and the number was talked about, I don't know, a couple bond measures ago, maybe, which, and the number is staggering. It's hard for any of us to take in. It's over a billion dollars clearly worth of improvements that if we just had all the money in the world, we would make. So I think it's helpful, perhaps, to look at what we've done and over what period and to try and take stock, which I think this kind of planning does allow you to do, of what more remains. The answer can't really be given about how many bond cycles, because it depends on the amount of the bond measure, obviously, and what's a tolerable number, how quickly we can do, how much work, all that. So having said that, I just want to kind of not raise expectations in a crazy way, though I think it's always legitimate to kind of take an ongoing look on, where were we? Where are we? How much more is there to do? So the thing I just want to say is, I don't think I want to pick on any particular things, although I do want to say I'm really glad that the Lincoln, the restrooms in the special ed area are included in this, because I really think they need to be, from what I understand. This has been discussed for quite some time. And I don't say that that's the same thing as restrooms generally. I think a lot of the restrooms generally, the issue is more a matter of maintenance and kind of ongoing attention and service rather than replacement. I guess I just want to say, I think this report was really excellent and the amount of work that's reflected and the amount of process that I think is reflected is amazing. And up to and including the work of the subcommittee, Joan, Alexis, and Judith, which was really, really interesting and worthwhile. Because I think anybody would look at the overwhelming amounts, a number of needs that have been identified and say, how do we choose between these things? And so the process that you outlined of, well, we could do three big things, or we could do a little bit everywhere and all of that. And then sort of working your way to the back, forward and backward to, well, what did we commit to in the bond measure? We committed to getting rid of the portables. What is the most, what are the most student-centered projects we could choose at this point? What, I'm not sure of the word you used, what would have the greatest student, direct student impact. I think, I just, I think you've done a really great job. This is staff and community members, education community, FDU, in really honing in on a proposal. Could somebody take issue and would any particular person have maybe their own subjective view of, well, maybe we should do more at this school unless at that school, or we should do this project and not that project? Yes, but that's inevitable. So what I do appreciate is how the thought that's gone into this and that you applied some guiding principles and some criteria and have come up with a proposal that seems to make sense. So I want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you who participated in that. And then I also want to respond to at least an email. And now Ruth Ann has come and basically said what she expressed in her email that we received last night. And I want to ask you to address how we're going to approach historic resource questions going forward and what you're thinking about in terms of helping us develop some kind of policy and procedures and guidelines so that we can talk about issues, in my view, talk about them with people who have now said, hey, we want to be involved at earlier points than unfortunately has been going on lately with the history building. So without asking that anymore with any more flavor, Carrie and Steve, could you speak to that?
Be happy to. I just really want to thank Ruth Ann and also Nina Fresco. We've now talked and met with them a couple of times from the Conservancy. And we, I can say, at least for myself and my conversations with the board leadership, we welcome their participation in our process going forward. We do respect our history and our cultural resources. And we really want to both be, show that we're committed and show our commitment to how we evaluate these facilities for the presence of historical resources and how the projects might be developed around them, how we can preserve those, but also how we can always be working towards providing effective educational facilities for our students. So to that end, what I've spoken to board leadership about is that we'll be coming in in the next few months with a proposed policy that would provide guidance to staff in conducting community outreach and analyzing, respecting, and feasibly reusing our historical resources. And we really look forward to working with the Santa Monica Conservancy and others in our community so that we really find the balance of that respect for our facilities while we pursue our mission to educate students. So we definitely have a process and we'll come back with something that really will be a guiding principle of how we will achieve that.
Oh, I, so I only want to press you a little on this. I think it's really, I think it's really important. There is something you said, I think, early on about us, after we sort of give direction, that you'll begin to look at hiring people to do design on some or all of these projects. So I do want to make sure that we develop some way and some way of obtaining input and evaluating and asking those questions you just posed with respect to any potential historic resources and issues about that before we go into design or as we go into it, so that it does guide the process. And so that we're not just giving lip service, we're really trying to accomplish what we say we are.
Certainly. Our recommendation is that for our architects, we work with the architects who've already gone quite a distance on this path with us. But I do believe we should be talking with them and working with them to supplement them with other consultants and potentially preservation architects as adjuncts to their teams so that we can really be looking at those resources and how to appropriately treat them. So that will be part of it. Also, you know, we will be doing what we both have to do as part of our sequel process, but we also will want to do even prior to the sequel process, a more detailed look at the campuses, so we can determine the proper pathway forward with each of these campuses and the projects we have coming forward. So we'll do that and elevate that early. And that, these are the things that we'll have as part of the policy that we would and procedure we come to you with.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I guess I'll turn it over to somebody else, because I really, I think it would be kind of crazy to take the project by project, given what you've done. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you for the incredibly hard work and responsible work.
Thank you.
I've got, thank you, Lori. I've got Ralph and Maria.
Yeah, thank you. So Carrie, I guess, well, first, you know, the necessary, you know, thank yous and plaudits to all the people who have really been working on this for, this is for many, many years. You know, the Samo, you know, the bigger projects have took, had to keep going, you know, and that was done. This is a very complex process to do the assessment of the buildings and the ed specs. Then really, you know, talk about how to create a plan, which, John, you've rightly asked for. Let me, let's, okay, let's step back. I don't, you know, I'm being you. I don't know everything that other people know, so please, you know, give me the big picture and explain to me, you know, what that is, so I can see how this, these pieces, you know, fit into that, this larger puzzle. But, you know, the FDU did incredible work trying to unpack and look through all this stuff with Steve and Carrie, you know, to, and then work with the architects to, you know, develop some really interesting stuff. So I guess the question is, and then Carrie, for you, Steve to answer, you know, when you bring this back next week, is the expect, what's the expectation that we'll say that these are the projects we're going to move forward with? And I think, you know, per Lori's questions and what Carrie's response, I don't, I don't see that that's in sync at this point. Because if we're gonna, you know, be looking at our resources, we've got to do it with these projects. We have to look at them. And it's not, while we're in, we're gonna, you know, and we'll hire people to help them. I mean, we have to sort of make sure now that what's been, the projects we're going to move ahead with, and even the plan sort of, you know, in the twenty-year picture plan, so to speak, we've made, you know, we've made good decisions, you know, as we're coming, you know, sort of starting this whole process. I'm not saying that anything that's been shown today isn't something we would move ahead with, but we should build on the work that was done, whatever that was, a dozen years ago, you know, district wide, and look at these campuses and make sure. So I guess, how do we do that?
Sure.
But it's taking somewhat of a risk. I want to say, so, you know, talk about that. I want to say in terms of Samo High and the history building, I do think, you know, that was a multi-year process that the, you know, that the education community and design community went through to analyze what was the best way to create a master plan. That was in the best interest of educating our students. And that's sort of our motto of the day, was we're here to educate our students. So I don't have any qualms that, you know, and to, and, you know, look, it's, what I do professionally, I look at old buildings and rehab them and reuse them. And most of the times, we can, but it's not always the case. But I think, you know, we really need to be honest, or people need to be honest and understand that using an old building does not mean you're saving half the money. It does not mean you're saving time by any means at all these days. You know, sometimes you're lucky if you save five or ten percent, you know, of a total project, if that. And because the new, the standards and the codes, you know, require that there's so much work. So once you figure out if you can, how to functionally use it, or how to use it in a way that doesn't impede what you want to do, you're doing it for reasons that are not related to, you know, saving tremendous amount of money and tremendous amounts of time. And Steve, I know that, you know, you might want to comment upon that, because I know you have, you know, a similar experience. It used to be the case that it was very, very helpful, but that I haven't seen that in a number of projects recently.
Sure. Do you want me to start with that, or you want me to start with? Okay, so I think the first thing you asked was where we go from here. And yes, next week, we would come back, ask the board to adopt the recommendation of the FDAC to move forward with the listed projects in Scenario Eight. As Carrie indicated, we have, when we put out the RFP for the campus assessments and planning, we included the ability to hire the same architects to design the first round of projects. And we would recommend doing that, I think, specifically with the projects that we have. The architects who have done that work have shown us that they can really perform. So our recommendation will be to do that. So if we get that direction next week, we would go forward with getting proposals to to hire those architects to design the first projects. And we still need to work out the sequencing of those. There was something in the middle there that I'm missing. The next thing you wanted to talk about.
I believe that we could do with those architects, determine what we need to around the question of the historical resources relatively quickly on these projects, only because mostly what these projects do is replace our portables. And while they've been around long enough in many ways to be considered historical, they would not be considered resources by any definition. So I think that, I mean, we do have a little places where we want to take a deep look. And I mean, we've already discussed with Johnson Favaro at McKinley about how that building, the new building there would connect with the existing, you know, nineteen thirties building. And there are a couple of places like that, but we'll want to do a much more deeper look as we're taking, as we're going into the sequel process and the master plan, you know, and taking the campus plans, each of the campus plans, and really understanding them. So there's a lot more work around that and that will align with the questions of historic resources. But I do think we can mostly get going on these projects without any impact. But where we do have it, we'll make sure we work through that process.
Okay.
So the third part of his, the third part of, did we get the third part of the question yet?
You did. I was just going to say, Carrie, so maybe for next week, you can bring the board back and create, you know, the list of the projects. And in fact, my thinking, you know, the one that may need a consultant, you know, brought on board would be a grant to redo the library, because it's part, you know, if it's part of the historic portion of that building. Not that that, you know, the adaptive reuse is what you would want to do. So as you say, you know, let's just be clear, you know, this project is replacing portables. Clearly, portables are not historic, you know, that you're going to want to save them, unless it's the first portable ever built, and hopefully it's not, like the first McDonald's. You know, but you're right, you know, these projects are done, you know, directed at certain areas. So certainly redoing bathrooms at Roosevelt isn't going to be an issue. So maybe at this point, to keep the community, you know, assured that we're not damaging any, you know, historic infrastructure, you know, relative to, you know, future thinking and learning. It might be as simple as just laying out where we may need to do a little extra work. And most of these projects, you probably don't need that.
Yeah.
You want, if the board's going to You want, if the board's going to make a sort of a decision that these are projects we're moving ahead with quickly, you know, let's. Make sure they have the information to feel comfortable making that decision.
Yeah, and we and we can share with Ruth Ann and Nina the. The scope of the projects we have and and discuss whether there are any concerns with existing buildings that could potentially have historic significance.
I think, Carrie, the last part was just my comments about. You know, the Samo High plan as as it is and. You know, and just my, you know, it just my my opinion about. You know, that. Working with old buildings, you know, is it just a given? That that you're. Saving money and saving time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, and I think just generally, that's a true statement. You know, it it isn't, we if we were to say, let's reuse that building as it exists or any building. As it exists versus replacing it, yes, of course, that's cheaper, of course, it's more sustainable. This isn't that. In order to modify that building, it would, as you as you're aware of, need to be brought up to current existing code seismic and everything. And you got to remember, this is a. The 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 history building that you're referencing is a nineteen thirty seven building built on top of it, I think, a nineteen eleven foundation. Was renovated in the nineteen sixties. It would have to meet twenty twenty building codes and that that is not a small order.
Thank you.
I've got Maria next, and I just want to check and see if Richard or Craig wants to get on the list after that. Or if you guys are okay for the moment. Okay, Maria's gone and then we'll see.
Oh, the only thing, you know, not to, you know, say anything. Reiterate, but thank you to the subcommittee, to Steve and and Carrie, who's brought in some some. I'm astounded, I think you've done such great work as a team there. And the only other thing I could say is that. The designs that you're bringing back, you know, it's almost like as if you're responding to this whole COVID situation. We need classrooms are going to be. Be able to open up to the outside and you're creating spaces to work on the outside. And whether I know the classroom sizes are going to be larger. But I think that's great because the the, you know, we can't teach like that, like in a traditional classroom anymore. When we're talking about, again, I reiterate twenty first century learning, you can't do it in a in a smaller classroom like like the ones we have now. You have to have, you, you know, large more space to have movable tables, movable chairs. To be able so that kids could be more creative and and like you said, the maker spaces to be able. To do what they have to do to work as teams, not as individuals, but as as teams. And I think, and it's not because we're making classrooms, I know, I think somebody's comment was that. We're gonna, you know, bring in more kids in the classroom, no, that's the contrary. Is I think you need the bigger spaces, whether we have, I don't think we're ever going to get to the point, we're gonna, you know, in in elementary school, you're gonna have over thirty kids. You know, quite the opposite, you know, you're gonna have less than that, but you but if you have large space for the kids to be able to be educated, to learn. I mean, that's what's so so nice about it and the fact that you have windows, there's air, there's light coming in, so again. For me, just. Factors that really, I think, aid in students in learning. And and things are changing, so I think we have to look at that, we have to kind of look at the fact that the way. You know, we're we're viewing education is going to have to begin to change, I mean, we're into the twenty first, we're going. Like we're almost, you know, a quarter into it and. We're almost going to start thinking about what are we going to look for, you know, the twenty seconds, you know, twenty second century. You know, most of us will be there, but at least, you know, it would be great to to leave some legacy there for for the future. Of what we're looking, you know, for our kids to learn and to be creative and to really be ready to to. To experience what's up in the world when they leave us at twelfth grade. So anyway, thank you very much, I think that was a good, and I look forward to our taking the vote next week.
Thanks, Maria. Craig, you shrugged and TJ, I don't know what that body language was, Craig or TJ, do you have a comment?
The only comment I would make is to thank the staff again for the incredible. Work, just to echo that, and then also to. Our Judith and to Joan and to Alexis, thank you very much for them also.
Thanks TJ, Craig.
Yeah, and likewise, I think. An enormous amount of work was done to create. You know, a foundation for a plan to create a whole set of possibilities. A bunch of really talented people spent a lot, a lot, a lot of time going through those. I think what we saw tonight was the result of an enormous amount of work and community involvement and community outreach. So, you know, I just echo the thanks of everybody's involved and look forward to seeing it back. When it comes back as an action.
Thank Greg.
And just, John. Want to thank you, Ralph, for your last comments on this, thank you so much, we always valued you because you were the only one. In our in on our board that had, you know. Had the professional expertise to help us all along, so we're going to miss you for that.
Yeah, it's also important for me to say that Ralph, as a member of our board facility subcommittee, has been. Invaluable in guiding us in all of the work we've done over the last five years, so thank you, Ralph.
Retiring board members don't leave, they join the facilities district advisory committee. We will still have Ralph's expertise guiding us on construction, I hope I didn't just volunteer you, Ralph, I think you agreed to that already. Alrighty, we do have a few general public comments, I don't want to hold those people any longer, so board vice president Lieberman, you could introduce them.
The first speaker is Jackie Stansberry. Followed by Nikki Kohoff. And then Sherry Davis and Esther Hickman, Ruth Ann Lerner, I have you down here too, but I think you maybe didn't mean to do that, but if you did. You can speak in general public comment too, I see your square is still there. So first Jackie Stansberry, then Nikki Kohoff, then Sherry Davis.
Hi, so I'm actually talking about distance learning. I don't know, can you, can you hear me? Okay, I don't see anything on my monitor. We are not going back to school this year. There is no way between COVID and what the teacher shared with us at the last board meeting before Thanksgiving. Kids are not going back to school and. We need to get them doing a decent distance learning program, I've been coming to these meetings for ten months. I just sat through three and a half hours and nobody's talking about how to make distance learning better. And I do believe it can be done, I mean, it is the twenty first century. And the teachers did an amazing job. Between what happened in the spring and what happened at the beginning of the semester. I can only speak specifically about the high school because I have a daughter in high school. Those kids are burned out. It's not working, the honors kids, the AP kids. They cannot be on a computer all day long for school and then all night long for homework. Something has to give, I do want to commend Dr. Shelton, today he did an amazing thing, he gave them a flex day so that they could. Have a day to catch up on their work, use office hours to meet with teachers, it was incredibly productive, but I think. What you guys need to be doing at this point is not surveying us about hybrid programs that we are never ever going to use. You need to be coming up with those creative solutions, I think that students and the teachers need to talk, and the reason that I wanted to speak tonight is because we really only have seven days before the winter break. And some of those conversations should be happening in the next week. The teachers and the students need to talk about what is and is not working, I was personally shocked. By what did work for my daughter and what does not work, and I think teachers would be surprised. The other thing is when Dr. Draddy says he doesn't understand why he's getting all these emails from parents. One message that parents have not gotten, and I have talked to some of my daughter's teachers and they agree with me. Their in their educational content is going to be reduced in a hybrid model, there's absolutely no way. To deliver the same amount of content. In the hybrid model as there is with distance learning, so particularly. For honors kids and AP kids, that's not going to work, and I also think, you know, let's not say, oh, this is terrible, our vulnerable students. Are are. Falling by the wayside, be creative about making distance learning work for them for ten months, nobody's been talking about making distance learning better. The only conversation we've had is what version of hybrid.
Time is up.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Jackie, I you're I I think you've made some good points and I think that they will. They will begin to emerge as things go forward, but there isn't anything on the agenda tonight to this to this.
We're running out of time.
Sure, I'm. She did I say Nikki Kohoff then Sherry Davis?
Yeah, and I think Lydia Moraro actually.
Yeah, I've got her, she emailed me, thank you.
Okay. All right, to the distance learning point, I wanted to raise another issue that the district needs to address, and that's the inconsistent. Application of the grading standards at the high school, so some teachers are giving more leniency on late work than others, and some are not allowing retakes while others are. And in this environment, it's just really important for that to be consistent because. The grades are really impacted and from discussion amongst parents, it seems to be. The AP classes that are remaining the most rigid and while they need to get through material. Those might be the classes where a bad grade is the most impactful on our kid, so it needs to be. Consistently addressed, they're either all giving retakes or they're not because it leads to disparity in grades. With respect back to the history building, I want to respond to Ralph's comment about it costing more, the. The district's own memo went and asked their architect to do a back of the envelope. calculation because of course the district has never analyzed adaptive reuse and while a price per square foot. Is more expensive for adaptive reuse, the new building that you all have planned at the high school is twice as big. As the history building, so that's why the estimate for reusing the history building was twenty eight million. And the cost for the new building has to be at least half of the 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 main contract of a hundred and ten million. And add in all the other costs associated with that, so it's got to be at least a thirty million dollar savings because of the scope of the project. Also relating to that, several of us attended site council at Samo High. To raise the history building issue with them because they were specifically discussing the academies. And we were told that was not the appropriate place to raise. The history building issue with site council, so if you're considering that public input. It's not. It wasn't really allowed there, and then back to the community engagement next door. Issue, even though it was polled, folks are concerned about the district's desire to control the message. And that is why folks are wondering what the contract is for next door and what they're trying to do because. Draddy's made it clear and many times from the dais that he is concerned about other sources of information and has called him fake news. And, you know, the district. Communicates with parents regularly on sites that censor and block parents, I have been blocked by John Keen. Which I don't think is legal because he's an elected official and I'm also blocked from the Samo High Facebook group, so I don't hear the information coming up. Out about my school and my kids' education. Every single day, and that is where your employees communicate with the community, and I was blocked in twenty eighteen during the bond campaign while. You know, arguing against it and saying that PCA shouldn't have endorsed, so that's not right. And that's why people are concerned about your social media policy.
I think your time was up, Nikki. Next speaker is Sherry Davis, followed by Esther Hickman, and then. Ruth Ann Lerner, if you have another comment on something different, I still have you listed here, but I think that may be an error. And then finally, we'll end with Lydia, Lydia Moraro. So Sherry, you're up next.
Good evening, school board members, in particular, school board member Metzer. I'm Sherry Davis, speaking tonight on behalf of the steering committee of the education advocacy group. Co-founded by Ralph, Community for Excellent Public Schools. As he completes his service as a school board member. We prepared a tribute that we'd like to physically present to you in the near future, Ralph. It reads, Community for Excellent Public Schools, or SEPS. Expresses its deep appreciation to Ralph Metzer for his leadership and service to the children and youth. Of Santa Monica and Malibu over the past thirteen years, as a member of the Board of Education of the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. And for the countless years of dedication and volunteering. To make the community and the entire Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District the best that they can be, which is pretty fantastic. Tonight's meeting showed the true impact of Ralph Metzer on our Santa Monica and Malibu schools. Committed to the very last minute. To ensuring the very best policies and plans for students are being forged, Ralph actively spoke so thoughtfully on every item on the agenda. I I think we all know Ralph will continue to make a difference. Ralph Sepp will also be presenting you with a print of the photo. Of us handing the paperwork to the Santa Monica City Clerk seventeen years ago. For the effort that led to the joint use agreement with the city of Santa Monica, one of the very important sources of local revenue for SMM USD. Among many, many of the things that you've worked on over the years. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Sherry, that was lovely.
Thank you, Sherry, thank you so much.
Esther Hickman? Oh, you know what, maybe I, maybe it, no, I'm sorry, Esther spoke on F one and that's how I confused Lydia. I just want to find out whether Ruth Ann Lerner really intended to put in a second chip.
Yeah, the the way it was set up, you had to put it fill in both fields, so I think we both spoke to it.
That's what I thought, thank you, sorry about that.
But I'm sure she would say to Steve and Ralph's. Comment, it's just that the the expert. Assessment has never been done, so we really don't know how to conclude how the building can be used, so I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you, Lydia Moraro, you're our last speaker tonight.
It it seems to be a tradition. Somehow, I think also Wendy Dembo seemed to have signed up as well, I don't know if you see her on the list, but. I just wanted to mention, I know we pulled the next door item, I did write to Gail Pinsky. Next door is a gossipy website full of racism and tolerance. Cuckoos, lost dogs and old lamps. So so certainly I don't see a place for the district there, I also don't think that. Our next door can provide the district with any relevant analytics of any kind. Next door doesn't know if you're a registered voter, it doesn't know if you have kids in the district, it doesn't know. Anything about you. I'm a next door person, I when when it started, I was like, oh, what is that, and now I'm like, ugh, please get it out of here. You know, and I go on there, if I find a dog, if I want to do a yard sale. So I hope this next door thing doesn't come back, certainly I don't see it as a tool, I know Dr. Draddy is not a fan of social media in general. I cannot imagine for a second how he could even tolerate anything on next door, him or anybody else, frankly. I'm part of that. And lastly, I'm not sure why we are putting out notes about filling out. The new seat that is available at the board and why we don't proceed with having the next candidate with the most amount of votes. I'm a little, being a new American. And excited about voting and all that, I I'm kind of, I don't know why it's not done that way, and I'd love to know the. You know, the thinking. Of, you know, opening it up. So that's it, thank you.
Lydia, I misspoke and I missed updating my Google Docs, so we have one final, final last speaker, and that's Erica Leslie.
Can I, Lori, I had put a chat shit into speak.
Sarah, I don't see that, but. You know. You you put one in for E two, that's the only one I saw up here.
And I said, no art.
Oh, I see, she submitted one shit with two different things instead of two separate chips, got it.
Okay, sorry, we're using the system as best we can. Okay, so let's have Erica Leslie and then Wendy Dembo and really, really no more. I apologize, though, it's it's a little bit. I apologize though. It's, it's a little bit, it works pretty well, but it's imperfect.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ralph for all these years of service. I, I would be remiss if I just missed this opportunity to just say thank you for stepping in on our IDA committee when no one else would. We, he really will be sorely missed. I just wanted to say thank you simply. That's all.
Thank you, Erica. Finally, Wendy Dembo.
Hi, thank you. I know you guys have been, I, I've been listening, you've been talking. Thank you. I, I just wanted to check in again regarding the art situation at Lincoln. You know, as you know, this year even eighth graders weren't, there wasn't room for even eighth graders, some eighth graders to take art, much less seventh graders who generally get to maybe take art for an entire year. And I, I just want to see what you guys, I know that Dr. Mora spoke with with Principal Culpepper. It, you, you know, Santa Monica has such a vibrant art program all through elementary and then it just basically stops in middle school and restarts at Samo. And I just wonder why that is. And it, it just seems there, like something's missing, you know. There, you know, and people who, the, the school provides music lessons for kids who don't have money to have music lessons, but they're not providing art for kids who don't have the money to take art. I, I can supplement art for my daughter, which I do because she's really, she's not musical, she's artistic. So I pay for her to have art classes, but there are other people in our community that don't have that. And they aren't have, they don't have the possibility to take art for an entire year. They can take 10 weeks in sixth grade. Maybe, I think 15 weeks in seventh grade. And then, you know, a full year in eighth grade, but art is so important to kids. And I just, I'm, I'm just wondering, I just, I feel like there's an oversight. This seems like a problem that can easily be solved. And it's something that's very important to me. And also I too agree with Lydia. I, I feel like Jason Feldman put, he spent time, money and effort running for the school board and I, and he got the sec, the next level of votes. I don't understand why he wouldn't just be appointed. I think Ralph was appointed at one point when he ran and he received, he was the runner up and he was appointed to the board. It just seems like there's some precedent in that and it should be followed. But thank you and I will say good night.
Night. Thank you very much. Sean, do you want to?
Well, yeah, I've actually got, I was just, we had one comment from a a member of the public who wanted to speak and couldn't stay, so I agreed to read it. It's on behalf of the, the DAC for Health and Safety. It's a note to Ralph. "Our DAC for Health and Safety will truly miss your liaison Ralph Metzer at our meetings. And we would like to publicly express our gratitude for his consistent engagement during our deliberations over these past years. Our committee is made up primarily of community volunteers in the health sciences field, many of whom are Santa Monica and Malibu parents, past and present. From the start of Ralph's appointment to liaise with us, there has been evident mutual respect for that very spirit of volunteerism and commitment to serve our community that he exemplifies. For one, it was appreciated that he prioritized attendance at the two hour monthly evening meetings so that we could remain connected to the board we serve. Second, Ralph communicated with an open mind, both as a listener and a speaker, and gracefully handed, handled, and gracefully handled when mutual perspectives were expressed during discussions of sensitive and controversial issues before us. Ultimately, we serve on this committee in full commitment to the holistic well-being of all our district's children and staff. And Ralph was the perfect partner motivated, as we are, to SMMUSD's continued growth and improvement in practice. He will be sorely missed and we wish him all the best in his retirement from the school board. Sincerely, your Health and Safety DAC." I, I do, so that brings us to the conclusion of the meeting.
Where did Ralph go, John? What, did Ralph drop off the meeting?
What?
I was just trying to watch his faces. All of the nice things are being read about him. Where did he go?
What did, well, it's internet just dropped. Um, that's, I mean, that's funny, but I don't know if we can.
Well, you have to send it to him and share it.
Yeah, I'll have to do that. Yeah, Dr. Kelly. Yeah, I.
Yourself, Mark.
I think Mark is saying he'll tell him he's on that committee. Mark's on that committee.
About Ralph slipping out quickly before we could, I was going to ask him to, to close our meeting tonight, but clearly he closed it a little prematurely. So i- i- in honor of Ralph's 13 years of service to the school board, the communities of Santa Monica and Malibu, we adjourn this meeting in recognition of his service. Thank you all.
Thank you.